It's time to call the December 16th County Board Meeting to Order. This is Board Chair Christian Dorsey. I'll be presiding today, and I'm joined by all of my colleagues, Vice Chair Libby Garvey, and Board members Matt Di Ferenti, Takas Karantonis, and Tanya Tolento. Those of you who are in the room, masking is optional, and if you would like a mask but don't have one, please check in with our clerks. Masks are available both in the room here at the front and also in the atrium. And today, some members of the public, as well as county staff and other presenters, are participating remotely as part of our meeting, a hybrid meeting model where we do things both in person and online. For those of you who are going to be speaking this morning and afternoon, and you will use the podium here to the front, you can adjust it to a height that's suitable for you by pushing either the up or down arrows located on the podium. And then also, don't worry about anything other than speaking directly into the microphone so that everyone can hear your comments. If you have documents that you would like to submit to the board, please hand those not to us but to our clerk, Mr. Barrera over there, and make sure that on each document your name and contact information is clearly legible. For those who are speaking remotely, we ask that you keep your microphones muted and your cameras off until you are recognized to speak. You can unmute yourself if you're participating by phone by pressing star six, or if you're joining us using the Teams app or on a browser, you can use the microphone toolbar to make sure that you are able to be heard. We do have a Spanish language interpreter who is available to facilitate the public comment portion of our meeting. Would our interpreter please introduce themselves in English and in Spanish? Gracias. And the way we are here at the start of the meeting, all five of us here may not necessarily be the way it is at all portions of the meeting. At some point, we may need to get up and stretch our legs, but rest assured, even if you cannot see us, we can follow the meeting through audio connections in the back as well as video. With that, we are ready to hear from our public comment speakers. As a reminder, the purpose of this portion of the meeting is for individuals to alert members of the board to issues that are not a part of today's public hearing or scheduled for an upcoming public hearing. To ensure that we can hear a range of topics and be fair and consistent to everyone, we do have a one speaker per topic rule. The rule also helps the board manage the main purpose of today's meeting, and that is to get to the items that are on the agenda that has been publicized to the community over the last couple of weeks. And also, we ask that you be respectful and fair of your neighbors who are here to speak as well as to participate in the other portions of the meeting by adhering to these procedures. If you are unaware, there are many ways in which you can engage the county board aside from these meetings, which occur only once per month. We have regular opportunities to hear anything that you have to say by having written correspondence. We can also engage with telephone meetings and virtual meetings, and each and every Monday, or at least most Mondays of the year, we have what's called Open Door Monday, where you just need to sign up as late as the day of, and then you will have an opportunity to speak with a board member about issues of concern. And most important about those meetings, the two-minute time limit or the three-minute time limits that we have here at this meeting are not in effect, so you can have a more dynamic conversation on issues that are of concern. If you have any questions about ways to engage the county board, please check with our clerks, who will be sure to let you know all of the different avenues you have at your disposal. With that, I'll give our clerk a minute, and you can let me know once you've... We're ready. All right, so with that, will you please call our first two public comment speakers?
Yes, the first public speaker is Yordanos Waldi, followed by Audrey Clement. Yordanos, you're welcome to come to the... Go ahead and tap the mic to make sure that it's on.
If you could press the push button that's on the mic, and then hopefully that'll work great. Thank you.
I am here representing countless neighbors in Green Valley and on behalf of Green Valley Matters to demand that the county and Arlington County Police Department put together an actionable plan to address public safety concerns in Green Valley, which must include regular police patrolling and enforcement of illegal activities. Over the last several months, my neighbors and I have advocated for public safety to address illegal activities committed mostly by people who do not live in our neighborhoods, including drinking alcohol in public, smoking marijuana in public, loitering on sidewalks in streets, urinating in public, and selling drugs. We have signed petitions, attended public safety meetings, appeared before the county board, sent in letters and emails, and despite all of our public safety advocacy efforts, the illegal activities in our community continue largely because they go unenforced by ACPD. The lack of enforcement has made our neighborhood attractive to people who want to openly engage in illegal activities without any consequence, and this has resulted in more serious crimes being committed, including the recent shootings on December 2nd and December 9th, which occurred in broad daylight. Residents are scared to call the police for fear of retribution, but there's no need for ACPD to wait on calls. The illegal activities happen in the open on a consistent basis, starting in the afternoon when children are walking home from Drew. This continued policy of inaction and looking the other way is not only dangerous, but it is inequitable. Nowhere else in Arlington County is a residential neighborhood within feet of an elementary school subjected to open and persistent illegal activities that go unaddressed, except in this mostly black and brown community. Please act now to ensure we have consistent...
Thank you, Ms. Waldi. We appreciate your comments.
My name is Audrey Clement, and I'm a resident of Westover. This is a belated annual political yard sign report. The good news is that out of about 750 Clement signs deployed throughout the county, 60% or about 450 were recovered after the election, a vast improvement over 2022 when an estimated 70% were confiscated, thanks to the winners of the 2023 county board race for their leadership on the campaign trail. The bad news is that other Democrats did not follow their example on Election Day. Local GOP Chair Matt Hurt reported that he was accosted by an irate Democratic voter for passing out GOP sample ballots at Dawson Terrace Precinct. Hurt captured some of the altercation on his cellphone. Fox News got the video and replayed it on the Jesse Waters Show, where it then went viral. The voter told Hurt, quote, "You might have been walking up to the polling station and put a gun to my head trying to tell me not to vote," end of quote. When Waters asked, "What's the deal with this guy?" Hurt replied, quote, "This is the tolerant left in Arlington County. The Arlington County Republican Committee is working hard to earn the votes of people across Arlington, and Democrat voters and progressive activists are not excited about it. They are very upset that we are organizing behind enemy lines in Northern Virginia," end of quote. Hurt said he is pursuing charges against the voter who accosted him. Yet another irate voter was caught on video on November 7th declaring, quote, "All maggots needs to go to Gitmo. You Republican maggots are scum," end of quote. Meanwhile, so-called progressives routinely denounce Trump and the GOP as fascist. Go figure.
Okay. Next public comment speaker.
Next, it'll be Jane Zimmerman, followed by Hino Jassise.
Good morning. With new board members taking office next month, this board and county manager must prioritize transparency and accountability in government. Arlington is woefully deficient, whether by neglect, design, or both. Confidence and trust in our local government is abysmally low, as the survey the Civ Fed overwhelmingly confirmed this year. Examples abound throughout the county regarding lack of transparency and accountability. As a 30-year resident, here are mine as my neighbors and I enter the next phase of site plan meetings for the Langston Corridor. Why did my neighbors and I have to find out from a FOIA request filed by Arlingtonians for our sustainable future that county staff have envisioned for quite some time developers demolishing our homes to construct a 57-unit apartment building? That vision is completely contrary to what we shared with the county and the Langston Boulevard Alliance over these past years. Why did ASF have to file a FOIA in the first place to obtain the county's projections for housing buildout and ensuing changes to the general land use plan, or GLOP, and zoning under the plan? Why can't such information be posted publicly on the existing website? What national security or personal privacy information and trade secrets are being protected under the Freedom of Information Act? The county is not protecting my personal data or my neighbors, so whose proprietary information is it protecting? When staff finally responded to ASF's FOIA on October 23rd, why did it omit the necessary document with parcel IDs or locations? Effectively, the Rosetta Stone needed to decode that information. Why did staff not provide a complete response until November 14, a full 37 days after ASF's initial request to staff, and three days after the county board's approval of the plan on Veterans Day? Why does the board outsource community engagement through grants to the Langston Boulevard Alliance, a 501(c)(4), which unlike a 501(c)(3) does not have to disclose a donor's yet can engage in political advocacy and endorse political candidates? Democracy is about transparency and respect. Arlington can do better. The question is, will you?
Okay. Thank you.
Hino Jassise, you can come to the front.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I would like to thank you for being here to hear our voice and our concern. My name is Hino. I have been working at Boston Parking 27 years. I have my coworkers standing here with me today. We are union members with Unity here, Local 23. As you know, Boston Parking has been gateless parking since last month. That means no more casher and will be thrown out of job. I am a family man. I have a family here and back home that depend on me. If I don't have a job, I cannot afford to help them. Also, if I lose my job, I will also lose my health insurance, which is very important for me because I had a major hip surgery that need regular follow-up. I cannot afford to pay for health coverage if I don't have any income. My whole family relies on my insurance. I'm depending on my employer. We are stressed out each day and night because we don't know what will happen to us next day. I really need to ask you to take it very serious. We need surveillance to honor our year of service to Arlington community. We also need opportunist for job in the county. Lastly, those machines are terrible, taking away our job. The best thing is if you can stop them from doing this. It's very urgent. It's require your support, help us with this situation. As soon as... As you know, all employees at Boston Parking has working at least over 20 years. All of them have the same concern, and they share my story and stress. Please take fast action and take it seriously. We are really appreciate your support in the past and the now. We thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jassise.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is William Lawson, followed by Carrie Devera.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Barnes Lawson. First, I want to thank you, Mr. Dorsey, for being on the board and all the work that you've done. It's been a fun run, and I know how much effort you put into this job, so I want to thank you very much for your service. I'm a member of Westover Baptist Church, and we just got the news that we're going to lose the Levine School of Music. They're going to Fairfax, and we have some private schools that would like to use space there, and we can't do that until the ordinance gets corrected and we add back the ability of private schools to be in church facilities. That was inadvertently taken out of the ordinance when we went from the old one to the new one, and so I guess I'm asking the board if maybe that could be speeded up a little bit, because there is the demand there, and it would help the church. Church has a lot of overhead they have to pay for, and so it would certainly help the church. The second thing is myself and six other people own a small office building in Arlington, and as we have grown older, some of us are starting to leave our various practices, and so we're trying to lease space. And we've had a parade of medical and dental users that want to come and lease space from us, but we can't do it because we don't have enough parking. It's a historical fact that in the ordinance, medical has always had a much higher parking requirement than regular office, and I would ask that that be amended so that we can lease to a medical provider. We've lost a lot of our medical providers to false church. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carrie Devera, followed by Andrea N.
I complained about Arlington Police Department to our Commonwealth attorney. I wasn't complaining about police. I was complaining about you. The Commonwealth of Virginia requires you to do your job. You're fiduciary of financial client victims. Despite my building a college campus crime lab, first of its kind on the continent, I'm a victim. Virginia financial advisory firm, Bernie Company, and its advisors intentionally directed my complaint of missing money to FINRA, a business leak for security broker-dealer firms only. I'm not a securities broker-dealer firm. 2010, the SEC asked me to be their fiduciary. They're their non-industry whistleblower. I expose SEC and FINRA scams. I expose cops, counties, and commonwealths are misled on who the first responders to financial crimes and criminals are. November 17th, 2022, I called cops. May 1st, 2023, I called Parisa's office, telling her deputy, Mr. Overend. I called to complain about Deck Officers Detective Bamford and Parsons. I told Overend cops took no action. I told them why, and why they could not. You defunded Arlington's PD's budget. You slashed financial investigations. Financial crimes are atmospheric, and they're done in the dark and unseen and unheard. You don't hear about financial crimes, so there can't be a police response. You ignore Arlington County financial crimes outweigh gun crimes. Why would you do that? Arlington County laws has no laws telling victims, "Call cops. I call you out." Cops are law enforcement. FINRA and SEC are enforcement. Our cops were doing their job when I called. They do the jobs you write for them. Do your job. Make sure your law, you do a law that matches Adam and Evan's law that we did together. Make Parisa do the job she got reelected to do. Arlington cops could not act on Virginia law. Make Arlington County codes and ordinances match Virginia law. Parisa is fiduciary of Virginia law. And back our police doing their job, because I'm not backing down. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrea M., followed by Michael Beer.
Sure. Thank you so much. Buenos dias. Voy a leer el testimonio de una miembro de la comunidad. Ella se llama Andrea Montoya, y estoy ante ustedes con el corazón cargado de dolor, una voz ahogada por la angustia que ha destrozado mi familia y han dejado una marca indeleble en mi salud y bienestar mental, con manos temblorosas y marcando por las consecuencias, incapaz de hablar sin revivir el trauma que nos han infringido sus políticas, implementadas con un aparente insensible desprecio por el costo humano que cobran. Han destrozado los cimientos de mi familia, las repercusiones resuenan en todos los rincones de mi vida, manifestándose como temblores físicos, miembros paralizantes que se pudiera denimir cada vez que intento expresar el dolor que han causado en sus decisiones.
Good morning, dear Arlington members. Good morning, dear Arlington members. I stand here with my heart heavily, with sorrow and voice chock by the anguish of the police that have torn my family apart, and they leave indelible mark on my health and mental well-being. It is trembling hands. I'm scared about the consequences that I had to address today. I am unable to speak without relieving the trauma inflicted upon us. Your policies implemented with seemingly callous disregard for the human toll this exact... The repercussion echo in every corner of my life, manifesting a physical tremors and paralyzing fear that grips with my bare being whenever I attempt to voice the pain on my decisions have brought. Comparto mi historia con un mero relato de sufrimiento personal, sino como una demanda ferviente para garantizar que nadie más en nuestras comunidades enfrente el mismo destino desgarrador. La angustia que he soportado y la angustia que han soportado mis hijos sirven como testimonio del costo humano de políticas que en su implementación carecen de empatía y comprensión. Les pido reconsideren, que miren más allá de las máquinas burocráticas y reconozcan las vidas que tienen en sus manos. Estoy aquí no solo por mí, sino por los innumerables otros que pueden recorrer el camino similar. Eliminar la sección 7 de la póliza de la confianza y la aceptación de diferentes rangos de identificación. Debemos tener la perpetua detener la perpetuación de un sistema que sirve como conducto para la deportación que separa familias y deja un paso del rastro de dolor en nuestras vidas. I share my story because I have counts of personal suffering, fervent demand to ensure that nobody else in the community faces all the horrible things that are happening with my family. My children have suffered tremendously, and they are testament of the human cause in policies. I am here not only by myself, but by the countless others who may be treating a similar path. Remove section 7 from trust policy and accept a different ranges of the IDs. We must hold the perpetuation of a system that serves the pipeline for deportation, tearing families apart and leaving its wake trails of fractured lives.
So today, we're delivering over 700 petitions from Arlington County Board members demanding removal of section 7 from this policy.
Thank you.
And accepting a range of IDs.
Thank you.
Expired. Last, Michael Beer.
For the record, Michael Beer, I want to start off by thanking Tanya Tolento and Christian Dorsey for your many years of service to Arlington. Thank you. You've worked really hard, and Arlington's the better for it. I'm here asking you to, I don't know if you've given guidance to the county manager yet on budget or what, but I'm very much hoping that you will limit cuts to the budget next year. I know there may need to be some, but I would like the predominance of balancing the budget to be done in terms of tax increases. I think that our tax rate is among the lower tax rates in the region, and we need to invest in our schools, invest in metro, and invest to get through these difficult budget times. So please be very strong in raising our taxes as necessary to balance this budget. As a tiny budget matter, I'd like to also ask you to get rid of the subsidies that we do for the richest group in Arlington, which is the 55- to 64-year-olds, which I actually belong to, particularly for parks and recreation issues. Why are we giving financial incentives, discounts to the wealthiest, certainly the highest-income group, probably the wealthiest group in Arlington, at the county pools, et cetera? I just think this is sending the wrong message. It's fiscally irresponsible, and would ask you to take a look at this policy of subsidizing the wealthiest group in the county. Obviously, whether it comes to the tax rate in terms of property taxes or whether this group, there are limited income people, so let's do what we can to try to help those people who are of limited income and limited wealth through specialized programs that we have or can think of. But overall, let's do the right thing on the budget. Thank you much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Are there any other public commenters?
There are no other public commenters.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming this morning and sharing your thoughts and concerns with the board. We will address the ones that require follow-up, beginning with Ms. Waldi in Green Valley. Let me just say at the outset, before turning to the manager, who I believe has a number of operational matters to report, you know, clearly, this is something that each and every member of the board is concerned with immensely, because anytime anyone in our community does not have a level of safety in their community, it's something that we should all care deeply about. And we have been working with various members of the community, some of whom are in the room right now, over the many months to figure out what the response should be. So with that as a prologue, I'll turn it over to the manager for some recent updates.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and also Yordanos and members of the community who are here today. A few things. As you noted, we've been having ongoing conversations with the community. A few things I'd like to report. You know, we had talked about doing an education campaign, and that is ending, and you should start seeing visible Arlington County police presence, not just a cruiser. I'm talking about police officer or officers on foot, starting this coming week. Number two is we have deployed our portable camera, which we have, and also added a license plate reader function in the area. That is the most immediate response, but upcoming, as you know, the board has authorized additional expenditures for purchase of additional cameras and closeout, and we're in the process of purchasing those that will be located in the town square and in other areas. Also, we are exploring with some of our partners with Arlington Public Schools, internally with the Department of Environmental Services and Parks and Recreation, about what we can do about lighting. That is not, I mean, we have lighting that we might want to have on longer at the basketball court, but there's other lighting that we need to improve. That can't happen overnight. We have to do some infrastructure improvements on that. We also, as of right now, I've authorized the police chief to go ahead and purchase something that I think some of you are familiar with, a ShotSpotter, which is known in certain parts of the country, which helps detect ongoing incidents so that we're able to respond more quickly. We also will be continuing... We also will be continuing, this is something I know, Mr. Chair, you're familiar with, because we've had meetings along Columbia Pike with something called the SEPTED process, which is, you know, community design to see where we can figure out where there are some spots that need better visibility. And so we're finishing up that analysis. And also, I wanted people to know, we sent out a press release last night. There has been an arrest in the most recent incident in Green Valley shooting. There was an arrest last night of Darnell Moore on the most recent incident. And we have other leads that we're following up on vigorously. I can't really comment on the status of those investigations, but they are ongoing. And, you know, with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions. And also emphasize that we continue to want to have conversations with the community about things that we might have missed or that we could do in addition.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. And, you know, just as a comment before also inviting other colleagues to share, you know, when it comes to criminal incidents, we got to center ourselves first to recognize that there are people in our communities who are doing illegal and illicit things, and they are the ones who are at fault. The question becomes, what is our responsibility? And it's at least my opinion that, at the end of the day, while we can't necessarily say that any investment that we make or any policy change that we will make will result in a certain operational outcome. We can't say that we do this, crime is going to be reduced X percent. We can't say, we do this, the number of shootings return to their historical average or what they are across the county. But I think our responsibility, at least my opinion, is our responsibility is to be able to look at everyone in the face who lives in Green Valley and say, we've done everything that we could. And that's the responsibility that I don't think that we have met to this moment. And so I'm happy to hear about these upcoming changes. I think continued engagement to make sure we're trying to get at that question or get at that answer. We're doing all that we can is exactly what's in order. So I thank you for that, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you for the community for showing up. And colleagues, Mr. Di Ferenti, and then we'll go around to anyone else who wants to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two thoughts, two comments. One is, I think, in order to address your questions and your comments this morning, we haven't touched very much, there have been actions this summer. I've been in some of those meetings, and there's been an increased level of communication and increased outreach. But that doesn't address December 2nd and December 9th. So I just want a context for all of us and those listening. That's one thought. But the most important thought is the first thing, other than the ongoing investigations, which we can't comment on. The most important thought for me, I'm very heartened to hear on-foot officers or officer or officers this week. I'm mindful that that seems to me the best single step that we can take. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Talento.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. First, I want to thank you all for being here this morning. I recognize how hard it is to get out and have to advocate for your community, especially when you're in a community that has many working community members, and so you are sometimes the face of a much larger group of people. So thank you for being here. It is important. I wish I could tell you, don't worry, we got it, but I've never seen government work that way. You have to come and advocate. With that said, I do want to share that our colleagues and I have had conversations trying to prioritize this so that we can ensure that all of our community members are safe, but in particular, community members in Green Valley. So please know that while you can't see all the work, there's discussions being had on how to try to address the concerns that you have and make this a permanent solution so that Green Valley can prosper and be the safe community that it wants to be while we navigate the times that we're in today. So thank you all for being here and for the advocacy.
Thank you. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. I also want to thank Ms. Waldi and others for coming in. I know it isn't easy. And certainly, I think we all agree, you know, we tried education efforts during the summer to sort of get things started, and it clearly is not enough, and we absolutely need to be doing more. I'm pleased to hear some of the steps that we are taking. I did have a question for the manager on the lighting. I understand that takes a while. Do we not have mobile lighting sometimes where we can bring it in, you know, quickly? And do something like that possibly before we get the construction finished?
I don't know the immediate answer to that. I've asked that, and I'll have an update for you on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. And so I think we're all absolutely committed here. We really do want to make this area attractive for the folks who live there and people who want to come and engage positively. We don't want to make it attractive to folks from the outside to come in and do things that are not healthy and not good for the community. So thank you for coming in. We definitely have more work to do, and we're definitely committed to doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, I will thank you for coming in this morning, but I am absolutely reconciling of the fact that this is the third time in a year, or second time in a year at the very least. And I have a very long folder in my email inbox of the messages, the concerned emails, the discussions, the photos, et cetera. What I understand is it's not only about mitigation of a series of incident. It's about the entirety of a safety environment and feeling safe and empowered in your own neighborhoods. And this is not the first time that this happened in Arlington. I'm not going to single out Green Valley for that. It's happening today, Green Valley. Yesterday it was in Clarendon. We have seen that before. And my question is, and I agree with the chair, we need to make sure that we do everything that we possibly can. Now, we need some help to figure out what we possibly can. We go incrementally, but we probably need, and I'm putting that on the table, I'm saying that openly, I need help, maybe external help, an evaluation of, you know, what are the real options? What can be done more than just surveillance or, you know, better education, et cetera? What are the critical elements that have to be in place so that we have a safer community that is safe by design? So for example, one thing that I'm missing in this conversation continuously, and I've had this conversation with neighbors in Green Valley many times, is the economic development aspect. If you have a shop, a store, a bistro, a restaurant that works properly, you have, you know, eyes on the street, you have an active community that is all the time, you know, engaging naturally with the people who are on the street and that may not be from the neighborhood, et cetera. So there are many layers that we urgently need to explore. And I will continue to work with the county manager and with the community to figure out these pathways. So thank you for now.
Thank you, colleagues. Next, Ms. Clement. Thank you for sharing your opinions. Mrs. Zimmerman, so appreciate your concerns about transparency. We have been engaged with the Arlington County Civic Federation on substantive conversations on that. While those are ongoing, it is my belief that ultimately the outcome will be irreconcilable differences between the way some people view issues relating to transparency and FOIA and what is responsibly and practically able to be delivered by government. But that said, we are working to discuss those issues and make progress on areas of common ground when we can. There's one particular thing that I would like to address, and, you know, it relates to Langston Boulevard process and community engagement. There seems to be perhaps either a misperception of how community engagement was conducted during that process over many years. And while I believe you used the term outsourced, I want to be very clear, and this is not just an issue of semantics. The Langston Boulevard Alliance was a partner in the county's community engagement efforts, of which we had a substantial amount of engagement directed by, excuse me, staff and the board over the course of many years. And in fact, in a response to the community's desire to level up that engagement, we had the ability to partner with a group that was able to do things that were beyond our normal engagement plan. So there was a substantial amount of more engagement for Langston Boulevard, not less, and not without the responsibility of the county. And as we move forward, we learn from each of these opportunities to figure out how each successive level of engagement that's offered with major plans and discussions in our community can be made even better. And so I just wanted to make sure you understood the way in which we went ahead and partnered with them, not outsourced. Mr. Gassese, coming and speaking on behalf of workers for Local 43 at the Boston Garage, thank you very much. I will actually turn to the manager as well for some updates, because we have been in conversation with our contractor in this case. The garage is something that Arlington County owns, but its management is operated by a private vendor. And, Mr. Schwartz, you've been in touch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for everybody who came in today. So I apologize, I'm going to talk a little bit about budget issues first, but I think that will address it. So we have, with our contract with Standard Parking, given them funding to fund full staff complement through the end of this fiscal year. So that's as of June 30th. So we've been very clear with them to take no action to reduce staffing during that period of time. And so I want to make it clear that we have the funding there, and there's no reason why they should reduce staffing. Now, I'm not going to speak to anything about what's in the collective bargaining agreement separately that these employees have with their employer. So the issue about staffing on a going-forward basis will be something that this board will deal with when I come to you with a budget proposal in February. And hearing what everybody said is my goal, to make sure that any of the people here in this room don't lose their employment. I think there's a way to do that, and I hope that provides some assurance to people, because as the person who testified, these people have been giving years of their lives to, I think, you know, they do a great job. And so I just wanted to leave it at that, if you have any other questions.
No, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. And I'll just say there's the other matter of some ongoing work that staff is doing to work with the contractor there because of the parking systems that have been implemented.
I have an update on that, too, if you want to hear about it.
Okay, keep going.
So having myself at some point, about a week after the mechanical equipment was removed, been in the garage and found myself frustrated with trying to figure out how to use this new app. There are a number of steps that we have taken. We're not quite there yet, but there are a few issues that have been identified by people. Those people who want to use their phones to download the app and pay. The coverage within the garage for cellphones is spotty at times. So we're engaging in a process to try to retrofit the garage. I had hoped to get that done by sometime in January. I will report back on that. I'm not sure we'll be able to meet that timeline. But separately, there are pay kiosks in front of each of the elevator levels that were there previously. But the signage hasn't been that good. And the other thing is that when people are in Boston Quarter and walking around, you know, I'll just give an example. Sometimes when you're in another facility, like I go over to Virginia Hospital Center, you can't go more than three feet and be reminded that you better pay when you leave. There's signs throughout the facility, and we were working with the other tenants within Boston Quarter, including the movie theater, we want to remind everybody that there is a place for you to pay with either cash or credit before you go out. And so improving the signage, improving the lighting at the key signing locations. And then another thing, the signs, I don't know if you noticed this, the signs, you can't really see them sometimes because the color of the signs sort of blends in with some of the other signage there. So we're looking at trying to change some of that. And we also put in some speed bumps at the entrance and exit for safety now, because I think with the machines coming down, people were thinking that, oh, we can just drive in at whatever speed they want. We're trying to slow that down a little bit. So we're also open to additional suggestions. We've got a lot of comments from the public. We didn't get it right. We're making it better, but we still have some work to do.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. And I would just issue a mild admission that as we try to figure this out, that we don't end up spending a whole lot of money to retrofit an inefficient system and that we really think holistically about what the best way is to deploy a parking solution there. Mr. Di Ferenti, and then Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be succinct. In this case, I just want to thank everyone who came in and thank the manager for the point with respect to, I had been concerned at one point that January 1st might be a time period. And that does not mean that the worry about one's future is, absolutely, this is important to bring to us. But June 30th is, I think, and the end of the fiscal year, I think, is a step. And also, Mr. Schwartz's comments with respect to keeping the jobs and stop anyone from losing the jobs is a second point that I think is appropriate. I'll continue to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thanks, United, here for organizing and bringing people here. Understanding employment precariousness in Arlington is a very important part of what makes us a community here. The solution, quote-unquote, that we offer, that the manager and staff have worked diligently to offer, is only a partial solution. We understand that. We understand that there is life beyond June 30th. And there is basically also not a real guarantee that our partner there in the Boston Garage will, you know, behave the way we expect them to behave. So we need to be vigilant and continue to work to find a solution that is more satisfactory for all these people who, some of you have been working there for more than two decades, and I understand how hard this may be, especially in the lower, you know, income bracket of jobs that are available in Arlington. We definitely have a responsibility to be responsive to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. So appreciate your kind remarks, but more importantly, the concerns that you've raised, the two discrete areas. I know that you are engaged on issue one with our planning director, Mr. Fusarelli. And essentially, you want to see that the board speed it up. While I don't think that we necessarily will be able to meet your timeline for speeding up, do know that it is a priority for Mr. Fusarelli, because he acknowledges the unintended consequences from the 2019 revisions. And so as fast as he reasonably and responsibly can, he has, you know, certainly got it top of mind for consideration on the planning work plan. As for the second issue that you raise, the medical offices, and I'll invite staff if they want to share anything more about that. I believe this is an area that they are aware of, and as part of a fast-track process that we already have in place, the commercial market resiliency initiative, this is an issue where they're looking for key opportunities to make progress. I don't know if there's any other...
Yeah, I mean, the issue that Mr. Lawson pointed out was sometimes the awkwardness of our zoning ordinance that was written many years ago about how parking takes place. Sometimes there's not enough parking in front of one building, but nearby, there's a whole bunch of empty spaces. And to give the board and staff the flexibility to deal with that issue, because I, for one, want as many medical and dental providers as close to me as possible.
Okay. And Ms. Devora, so I have to admit, you've submitted voluminous materials, which I was unfamiliar with. So I will look forward to an opportunity to review, to understand exactly your concerns. But I do want to make sure you don't walk away with a misperception. Contrary, actually, coincidentally, as it is to the advocacy of a number of people in the room today, Arlington has not defunded the police. So I'm not sure where you were given that impression as it relates to your issues. But we'll look forward to digging in and following up with you as we can. Andrea, and the number of people who are here representing La Colectiva, I'd like to first turn it over to Ms. Talento, who I believe has been engaged with you and maybe with members of law enforcement about the trust policy. And specifically, we know of your two discrete asks of us, the elimination of section 7, which we have discussed perspectives on that before, but some of the other areas, there might be some progress. So Ms. Talento, please.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. I'm first going to address Andrea in Spanish, and then I'll talk a little bit about the work we're doing, if that's okay. Andrea, gracias por estar aquí con nosotros hoy día. Yo entiendo su dolor y su trauma. Es algo que yo entiendo personalmente, pero quería decirle a usted que en este país tenemos que balancear las cosas para asegurar que estamos atendiendo bien la comunidad. Sí estoy trabajando con mis colegas y con la policía para ver cómo podemos mejorar la póliza que usted está abogando. La póliza por la que usted está abogando. Y le voy a explicar un poco en inglés lo que estamos haciendo y después en español. Pero quiero que usted sepa que usted prestando su historia con nosotros es importante y que no es en vano. Pero no siempre se puede hacer todo lo posible que uno piensa. Y muchas veces los pasos que tomamos aunque se demoran son pasos adelante para mejorar la comunidad para todos. Pero todavía mantener nuestra comunidad en una manera que también tiene seguridad como ha oído usted hoy. Andrea, I just want to thank you for coming here today and for sharing your story. I personally understand your experience and the trauma. And just know that your story is not here in vain, and we appreciate you coming to do that. do that. While you're sharing your concerns, it's important that we balance the needs of our community. And while we may want to do everything that we can to address the concerns, we can't always do everything right away or do anything that will create a situation where it's not safe for the whole community. So really finding a balance. I have been talking with my colleagues and have addressed, have meetings with the police, as I shared with La Colectiva, that I would, to try to improve upon the policy. We are making some progress. I want to be very transparent with La Colectiva. I do not anticipate full elimination of Section 7, but we are looking to really tighten that. I believe it's important to ensure that everyone has due process regardless of their status and looking at how we do that while abiding by Virginia law, which we're required to do as a locality. And so unfortunately, it's not something that I will be able to vote on, but anyone who's worked with me knows that I do really work up to the last minute. So I will be here through December 31st, or if everyone's, I don't think anyone's working on Saturday, but through December 30th to really get to a place where my colleagues can carry it in the next two months. And I know that the police has worked with us very collaboratively, understands the concerns, and is trying to work on how they can much more clarify that so that we don't have community members who are falling into a situation unjustly where we are doing more harm in the eyes, engaging eyes than we are good. And so I just wanted to share that that work is continuing and that I appreciate your advocacy for being here. Entonces, lo que terminé de último es decirle que sí estoy hablando con la policía para ver cómo podemos arreglar la poliza. Quiero ser muy franca con ustedes, no vamos a eliminar la sección 7, pero sí vamos a ver cómo podemos aclararlo lo más posible para asegurar que no hay personas que caigan en esa situación injustamente y que estamos causando más mal de bueno teniendo esas conversaciones con las. Y entonces también vamos a ver cómo podemos, es importante que cada persona tenga la justicia que se da en este país aunque esté indocumentado, pero sí no vamos a poder darles todo lo que están pidiendo. Una cosa más, también estamos viendo si hay lenguaje que podemos poner en la poliza por las identificaciones, la abogacía que nos han dado. We're also looking to see if we can work on some language to address the IDs concerns that you have. So again, thank you for being here. Gracias por estar aquí. And that's what I have. Chair Dorsey, thank you.
Thank you. We so appreciate your work on this, Ms. Lento. Vice Chair Garvey.
Yeah, and I'll just follow up that. Thanks folks for coming in. I know this continues to be a concern. I really appreciate Ms. Lento's work. And you may be finished by the 30th of December, but I know you, you're going to be advocating because I've known you, Tanya, for a long time. And if you think we're not going to reach out sometimes for some consultation, you're mistaken. So I don't think you're quite finished December 30th. Just wanted to let folks know about that and do appreciate your work. Thank you.
Mr. Karen Tonas.
Only very briefly, Mr. Chair. Ms. Lento, we are very, very thankful for your contribution to this and ongoing work and advocacy. Trust is a living thing. It needs to be, you know, earned. It is not given. So it is, a trust policy is a frame that binds both of us, our community and us as a governing body. So trust evolves. And this is what Ms. Lento is working right now. And I try to be a companion so that we have, you know, we see this evolution of this document in a positive way that creates a trustworthy relationship that takes away the trauma and the fear. Nobody should be in fear in Arlington because of their immigration status if we can mitigate that. We are absolutely clear that we cannot mitigate all of that because it's beyond our jurisdiction. But while it's within our jurisdiction and it is, you know, balanced, is balanced with all our communities concerned, we will consider that and try to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Di Ferenti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Under our open meetings laws, no three of us can meet together without a public notice. And so Ms. Lento and Mr. Karen Tonas had the meeting, and I felt it was most important for them to have the meeting. But carrying forward Ms. Lento's work is something that I see as a responsibility. I won't say that I know every comma and every word of the changes that she has started to work on, but the spirit of the changes, both not overpromising that everything that you have asked for will be done, but seeking to make measurable progress towards the spirit that started the trust policy is what I count as part of my responsibility next year.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Beer. First of all, thank you for the kind words. And as it relates to budget guidance, yes, the board will take this up on Tuesday afternoon with some language that directs the manager and his consideration of developing the budget for FY '25. And we hear you clearly on your desire that Arlington be able to meet its, you know, real obligations, whether they are statutory or essential, and considering increased revenues as part of that equation. And we also hear you about 55-plus discounts. You know, certainly, there's a lot of conversation actually taking place in the region on that as it relates to various ways in which people are given discounts based on age status and not means testing. And so there might be some interesting regional conversations that Arlington can attach itself to moving forward, to consider those very issues that you were bringing up. So with that, we appreciate all of you who have come for public comment. As you can see, it's not just an opportunity for you to express your views on a particular issue, but to become aware of some of the broader issues which are affecting individuals and communities through Arlington. So you are all welcome to stay for the regular hearing items that we are about to consider. But if you would like to leave, we ask that you do so reasonably quietly. And just to facilitate our being able to do this shift change for the regular hearing, we'll just take a couple of minutes and begin that promptly at 9:30. Okay, we will come back to order. First up is consideration of our consent agenda. Mr. Barrera, have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, four. Item number nine, which is the use permit for the preservation and renovations to the Barcroft Department buildings, numbers 32 to 34. Item number 12, an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Articles 3, 4, 12, 13, and 14 of the Arlington County zoning ordinance. Item number 16, establishing RCV as the election method for Arlington County Board's primary elections. And number 17, ordinance to amend the county quota of Arlington, Virginia, to amend and reenact Chapter 69 with amendments.
At this point, it would be in order for a motion to approve our consent agenda with the exclusion of items 9, 12, 16, and 17.
So moved.
So moved by Vice Chair Garvey. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Di Ferenti. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have a 5-0, and the consent agenda is hereby approved. So with that action, we will hold a public hearing on items 9, 12, 16, and 17 at the evening portion of our recess meeting on Tuesday. That public hearing will begin no earlier than 6:30 PM. If you'd like to speak on one or more of the items pulled from today's consent agenda, you can register on the county board's website beginning today. And if you would prefer to make your intent known via talking to a live person, please call 703-228-3130 beginning Monday to register to speak at the public hearing. So with this action, the board just voted to approve dozens of consent agenda items, including minor site plan amendments, use permit requests, ordinance amendments, request to advertise, and more. These items are placed on our consent agenda because they are considered to be non-controversial, but that doesn't mean that they are unimportant. And as you can see with dozens of items on our agenda, we cannot devote the time to addressing all of them with public hearings. So I do want to take a few minutes to highlight some of the ones of consequence. The State General Assembly Legislative Package, item 11. The board adopted its legislative package, which includes the principles and priorities that we will take with our, take to the upcoming Virginia General Assembly session and prioritize. The principles are workforce resiliency, fully funding commitments to local governments, and respecting local authority. That will guide our engagement strategy for the session. The adopted package includes two additions that were not fully surfaced last month, and they are protecting temporary assistance for needy families funding, as well as clarifying some language in our public private partnership efforts to further expand our climate goals and specifically just outlining the number of areas that we will be engaged in. So we look forward to having those priorities pursued over the first couple of months in calendar '24. Item 13, amendments to the Arlington County zoning ordinance. These are really technical errors and inconsistencies throughout the zoning ordinance. Doesn't impact our land use or public policy goals, but is part of our continual and ongoing effort to make sure the zoning ordinance is a living responsive document that provides clarity and sensibility for property owners and users in Arlington. Item 20 is a memorandum of understanding between Arlington and the United Way of the National Capitol Area. They have worked with us hand in glove in supporting the equity-based nonprofit funding model, and that will be deployed for this upcoming budget cycle. And we have a memorandum of understanding to not only have their support through that, but to also allow us to effectively evaluate this first NOFA process. And so we look forward to continuing the relationship with them. Item 23, the board has authorized agreements with Federal Highway Administration, the Virginia Department of Transportation, the National Park Service, and the State Historic Preservation Office to minimize and mitigate the impacts of the CC to DCA project, which is the proposed project that we have connecting Crystal City to National Airport. And this agreement deals with the natural, historic, and cultural resources that could be impacted by this development. And so the county is currently completing an environmental assessment pursuant to the NEPA Act, which will provide 1.6 million to fund mitigation efforts associated with both the construction of this project and the increased usage of its amenities after it's completed. The board accepted a number of grants with this action from both federal government as well as the state. Item 21, 7.2 million from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation to promote transit alternatives to vehicular usage, continuing Arlington's commitment to multimodal mobility. Item 24, 6,100, from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality to support litter prevention efforts and recycling programs. Nearly 100,000. Item 25, from the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services, developmental services to support our efforts to serve individuals who are both senior citizens and also who have a serious mental illness or dementia and have a history of psychiatric hospitalizations or are at risk for such. Item 26, we have food security mini grant awards. These are not grants to us, but grants that we have made out in the community totaling $150,000. And these will improve food security infrastructure within Arlington, supporting our strategic plan that was adopted in 2022. The recipient The recipient list and associated descriptions of the community organizations and their grant-winning programs are available in the Board report. And then finally, we have a number of upcoming public hearings, which we advertised today or authorized to be advertised today. Item thirty-seven, to be heard by the Planning Commission and the County Board, will introduce green building standards to the Columbia Pike Form Base Code on the commercial side and update the standards for the Columbia Pike Neighborhood Form Base Code. Both sets of changes would effectively contribute to the goals of our community energy plan and green building incentive policy by bringing some of the green standards that we see in other entitlements to the Form Base Code process. Item thirty-eight will be heard by the Planning Commission and County Board in February, and this looks at the same Form Base Codes on the commercial side and neighborhood side and uses it to adjust parking requirements for elder care uses and also to provide some updates on the affordability requirements for elder care projects that utilize the Neighborhood Form Base Code on Columbia Pike. Item thirty-nine, heard by the Planning Commission and the Board at an upcoming public hearing, date uncertain, but associated with the redevelopment of Site Plan Two Thirty-Three, which we call the Best Western Site. And this amendment would expand the Special Affordable Housing Protection District and propose a multifamily building on the current site. And there are a lot of other elements related to this project. At this point, it is proposing to construct forty-two bedrooms, with twenty-four of them being committed affordable to ensure that all of the displaced market rate affordable units are replaced with CAF units. And I think that concludes all of the comments that I have on the items that we approved on the consent agenda. We are now ready to move into our regular agenda. And Mr. Barrera, will you please call the first item?
The first item is item number forty-three. This is a request to approve the Barcroft Apartments program-wide affordable housing financing plan and associated documents.
Okay. I know we have a lot of staff here in the room and perhaps online, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Schwartz to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's my privilege to turn this over to Melissa Danowski, who's also here with Ann Venezia from our Housing Division. So over to you, Melissa.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I'm Melissa Danowski with the Housing Division, and I am the General Barcroft Project Coordinator for the county. Just one moment while we get the slides up.
Would you like for me to show the presentation from the Board report?
I think we're going to give it one more try here. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience on that. So first, I would like to talk about where we are in the process and what you can expect moving forward. In December 2021, Jair Lynch Real Estate Partners acquired the property with assistance of a one hundred and fifty million dollar loan from the county and a one hundred and sixty million dollar loan from the Amazon Housing Equity Fund. Beginning immediately after the acquisition, Jair Lynch conducted resident outreach and engagement that helped inform their Master Finance and Development Plan, or MFDP. The Jair Lynch Master Financing and Development Plan for the property describes the initial Jair Lynch proposal for how Barcroft Apartments will be renovated and/or developed in the long term and includes options to deepen existing affordability at the property and pursue other community goals. A use permit was approved this past summer for the first renovation phase that contains ninety-three units. And since the submittal of the Jair Lynch MFDP, staff and the Jair Lynch team have been focused on review and analysis. This work also included resident engagement that occurred in 2022 at a variety of events and town halls. Jair Lynch also attended a variety of meetings with the larger community to present their MFDP and receive feedback. More recently, the Jair Lynch team hosted resident town hall meetings in October 2023 and also attended the November and December Housing Commission and Tenant-Landlord Commission meetings. Staff is now bringing forward staff recommendations for the site-wide affordable housing financing plan component of the MFDP. In addition, staff is bringing forward the financing commitment letter for the initial renovation phase, which is needed for Virginia Housing's tax credit and bond issuance requirements. As part of this County Board package, staff is recommending ratification of a HUD, Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing Grant Application, to advance a centrally-located renovation phase of Barcroft. And lastly, in order to stay on schedule with the commitment to begin renovating and improving the Barcroft property for residents, staff brought forward a second renovation phase use permit, which is a separate item on the County Board agenda. And please note, the land use analysis component of the MFDP is ongoing, and we will continue public engagement of the land use pieces in 2024. Next. So I'd like to take a little time to share some background information on the acquisition of the property by Jair Lynch. In fall of 2021, Arlington County learned that Barcroft Apartments was for sale. At the time, the Barcroft property was the largest market rate affordable apartment community in Arlington. Market rate affordable, or Marx, as we call it in Arlington, means that the homes are affordable to low and moderate income households by virtue of the age, location, and condition of the property. There is no local or federal protection that will keep these homes affordable to lower-income households. So first and foremost, the sale risk displacement of current residents purchased by developer interested only in buyright market rate development. Since this was a Marx community, there are no protections for the residents, and all were on month-to-month leases, which further highlighted the urgency and risk of the sale. The sale process was highly competitive and received a lot of interest. Fortunately, instead of being purchased by developer interested only in market rate development, Arlington County was able to provide a one hundred and fifty million dollar loan, and the Amazon Housing Equity Fund provided one hundred and sixty million dollar loan to assist with the acquisition of Barcroft Apartments by Jair Lynch. As a result of the acquisition, all one thousand three hundred and thirty-five units were committed to ninety-nine years of affordability, up to sixty percent AMI, and no resident was displaced as a result of the acquisition. Next. Back in 2021, the county and Jair Lynch's top priority and commitment was to no displacement of current residents. So this included freezing the rents at the current level for residents living at the property as of the December 2021 acquisition for all of 2022. It also included capping annual rent increases for these residents at up to three percent starting in 2023. Upon renovation and redevelopments, rents would be capped up to sixty percent AMI. Next. So the priorities moving forward include, first and foremost, the continuing commitment to no displacement of current residents. This includes a commitment to rent stabilization. So as portions of Barcroft Apartments are renovated or redeveloped and converted to low-income housing tax credit financing, those residents earning at or below eighty percent of the area median income will be able to move back to a substantially renovated or new construction home while maintaining their current rents capped at three percent annual increases. Current residents who earn above eighty percent AMI will have the option to stay in an unrenovated home at Barcroft Apartments while maintaining their current rents capped at three percent annual increases. In the future, when there are no more unrenovated homes available on site, over-income residents may move to a newly-built market rate home while maintaining their current rents. Additionally, Jair Lynch recognized that a three percent annual increase may not be affordable to all their residents. Property management worked with those residents who shared they were unable to afford a rent increase on a case-by-case basis, to waiver or reduce their rent increase, and to connect them to county subsidy programs and services. In addition to the commitment to no displacement, Jair Lynch and the county are committed to meeting deepening affordability demands at the property through a couple of different tools. Deepening affordability will be provided through the provision of at least one hundred and thirty-four units across the property for residents who earn up to thirty percent AMI, which is ten percent of the total thirteen thirty-five affordable units. The actual percentage of thirty percent AMI units in each phase will vary across phases. Some may have more than ten percent, and some may have less based on individual financing needs, but cumulatively, the county and Jair Lynch have committed to having at least ten percent of units, or one thirty-four units, for residents who earn up to thirty percent AMI across the property. Additional supportive residents with deep affordability needs will be provided through subsidy programs such as housing grants. Jair Lynch will also provide up to ten percent of the committed affordable units or CAF units for permanent supportive housing clients to be phased in upon unit turnover and over the course of the ten-year development and renovation period. These are in addition to the one hundred and thirty-four units committed at thirty percent AMI. Lastly, the county is committed to meeting deepening affordability needs while also capturing savings that may be available to manage the one hundred and fifty million dollar county acquisition fund loan used to help Jair Lynch acquire the property. These anticipated savings are important due to the significant increase in the cost of capital to the county, because interest rates have jumped dramatically since the 2021 acquisition. For example, debt service on the county's short-term one hundred and fifty million dollar line of credit is currently about nine million dollars, interest only. This is more than four times what was originally projected at the time of acquisition in 2021, and the increase is coming directly out of the county's annual Affordable Housing Investment Fund, or AHIF appropriation. This puts a strain on the county's AHIF budget and the ability for the county to undertake new affordable housing projects. Next slide. The County Board adopted an equity resolution in September 2019. The resolution includes, in part, direction to apply racial equity lens for every project. Specifically, staff asks the following questions when considering racial impacts of county projects. One, who benefits? Who is burdened? Who is missing? How do we know? And what did we do? So Columbia Pike, where Barcroft Apartments is located, is the most diverse area of Arlington County. According to data from the 2021 American Community Survey, five-year estimates, over double the proportion of Black or African-American populations live along Columbia Pike as compared to the county as a whole. We know from a resident survey that Jair Lynch conducted shortly after acquisition that Barcroft residents speak many languages, including Spanish, Amharic, Arabic, and Urdu. Though English is the predominant primary language, eleven percent of the residents who answered the survey indicated Spanish is their primary language. Amharic was the next predominant language after English and Spanish. The proposed affordability plan will benefit and enable all Barcroft families to continue to live in their homes at Barcroft. However, residents who benefit may also be those who are burdened, as the fiscal year 2022 Annual Affordable Housing Plan Indicator Report indicates only twelve point three percent of Arlington's rental housing stock is affordable to households earning less than sixty percent AMI. And very low-income residents who may not be eligible for county subsidy programs may be missing. However, Jair Lynch and the county have committed to rent stabilization for all current residents at Barcroft. In addition, at least ten percent of the units across the property will be affordable up to thirty percent AMI. Part of the allocation process for the thirty percent AMI units includes prioritizing residents within the renovation phase being undertaken or prior phases according to level of rent burden. The rent burden calculation is the monthly rent of the unit divided by the total monthly household income, which does include federal, state, and/or local subsidy programs. So therefore, those who have a higher rent burden and pay more of their income towards rent will be prioritized for the thirty percent AMI units. And we know this information based on census track information for this geographic area as compared to the rest of the county, as well as self-reported information we received from the Jair Lynch resident survey. In terms of what we do, the county has an opportunity to consider the proposed affordability and financing plan in light of these potential benefits and impacts. The county loan for each phase will have a term that is coterminous with the term of the senior permanent debt, which is typically thirty or thirty-five years if financed with Virginia Housing. The county loan will be a cash flow loan, meaning that payment comes from the cash flow remaining after payment of operating expenses and debt service from the senior loan, Amazon Housing Equity Fund, and project-related servicing fees. The county loans will carry an interest rate of point five percent per year. To help buffer market and financing risk, a phasing reserve fund is included in the financing plan. Specifically, the county and Amazon's upfront savings or excess proceeds that may be obtained after closing of individual phases would be held in a third-party interest-bearing escrow account. The phasing reserve funds will help ensure delivery of all CAFs and overall financing sustainability, including a minimum of ten percent of units up to thirty percent AMI. It serves as a protection if market conditions change midstream. Portions of the phasing reserve fund will be released at certain points to the county, anticipated to occur after 2025, and as certain milestones are met during the following five to eight years. Next. The first renovation phase contains ninety-three units. As part of the proposal, the exterior renovations include replacing windows that have not previously been replaced, restoring brick walls, repairing or replacing roofs, and performing other necessary building repairs. Interior renovations will include updating bathrooms and kitchens and new in-unit laundry, as well as upgrading HVAC and other systems. And the use permit for the first renovation phase was approved at the July 2023 County Board meeting. As part of the renovations, eighteen two-bedroom homes will be converted to fourteen three-bedroom homes and four four-bedroom homes. The units will average up to sixty percent AMI, and Jair Lynch has committed to providing nine permanent supportive housing units upon turnover of current tenants. The county loan will carry a point five percent interest rate, and the term will be coterminous with Virginia Housing's term of thirty or thirty-five years. And any savings from this phase would be deposited into the phasing reserve fund that was discussed on the previous slide. Next. As part of the County Board package, staff is recommending ratification of the HUD Pro Housing Grant Application that was submitted on November second, 2023. In partnership with Jair Lynch, the county applied to receive up to ten million dollars in funding to advance a centrally-located renovation phase at Barcroft Apartments. The funding proposal includes rehabilitation of a future phase of Barcroft that would include about one hundred and one homes that average up to sixty percent AMI, with a minimum of ten percent of the units set aside for those earning up to thirty percent AMI. It also would include construction of a resident community and amenity center and improvements to two primary streets. The staff recommendations include the following. Approve the attached Barcroft Apartments Program-Wide Affordable Housing Financing Plan and associated documents describing the site-wide affordability and financing plan for Barcroft Apartments. Two, approve the attached Barcroft Apartments First Renovation Phase Alpha One Term Sheet, which outlines the financing terms and details of the first renovation phase, and the attached Arlington County Affordable Housing Financing Commitment for the Rehabilitation and Renovation of the Barcroft Apartments' first renovation phase, for the renovation and rehabilitation of that first phase. Alpha One Term Sheet, Alpha One Financing Commitment Letter, and the Barcroft Apartments' Program-Wide Affordable Housing Financing Plan and associated documents. Collectively, the Barcroft financing documents that are necessary to remove any ambiguity Collectively, the Barcraft financing documents that are necessary to remove any ambiguity or inconsistency, or which improve the county board's financial security or financial position, and which revisions do not adversely affect the county financially prior to or after the execution of the Barcraft financing documents. And lastly, to ratify the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's pathways to removing obstacles to housing grant application and associated assurances and certifications. Thank you, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Donowski. I'll now turn to the applicant and turn it over to Mr. Lynch from Jair Lynch Real Estate Partners.
Good morning. My name is Jair Lynch from Jair Lynch Real Estate Partners. We're at a very proud moment in terms of the work that we've done over the last two years with county staff and many of the community members to bring forth a master finance and development plan that is consistent with the overall acquisition and aspirations that came from what was the largest multifamily purchase in the United States in 2021, and what was, we think, is one of the largest commitments to affordable housing that we've seen in a single project. We have a presentation. Go ahead, we'll go to the next slide. Just to remind everyone, over the last couple of years, I will not try to repeat a lot of the very thorough presentation that Melissa provided, but there's a couple of things that folks need to be reminded of. One, when we first walked the community, we recognized right away, without any surveys, that there was a wide spectrum of people from around the world that lived in this community, that represented Arlington in every way possible. And we were very much prepared for the challenge to be able to figure out how to preserve all of this affordable housing, as well as develop on Columbia Pike. And I'd really want to make sure that everyone here knows that that didn't happen in just 90 days. That happened because the county board members and staff recognized that this community, built in nine sections over 15, 20 years back in the '30s, '40s, and '50s, was probably the most important community in terms of representing what could change in Arlington with all the economic development that was happening around it. And that preparation made all the difference in the world in terms of us prepared to partner with the county and Amazon to invest our own dollars and be able to go on this journey. As we go through this, we have found that there was not only the wide spectrum of people who lived in the community, but also a wide spectrum of incomes. And we found that while we committed to 60% AMI at the onset, most of the residents make much less than that. And as you know, just for context, a one-person household at 60% AMI currently is about $60,000, $65,000. And so we have people who are making much less than that. And we think that we have come up with a responsible policy position as it relates to the affordable housing, as well as a set of responsible procedures that allows us to move forward with the financing and the execution of the plan. I made a comment earlier to someone that this is much like preparing to drive across country. We have to pack enough food for the drive, we have to pack enough gas, we have to prepare for enough gas, we have to put a little extra in there as well, because we don't know what will happen as it relates to financing. As Melissa indicated, interest rates have increased dramatically, have devalued properties across our country, and has made financing very, very difficult. And so what we've produced in the procedures is ways in which we are able to be competitive for the other parts of the permanent financing that will be brought to bear for the affordable housing, both the low-income tax credits and the tax-exempt bonds. And I tell people all the time, local policy has to be a good dance partner with federal policy. Go to the next slide. Because if not, you're unable to achieve the goals that want to happen at the existing location and turning these into committed affordable units. So again, I will not go and repeat everything that Melissa went through in terms of stats, because I think she did a wonderful job. But I just wanted to remind everyone that the work that's been done over the last two years is just the beginning. We have to deliver these committed affordable units over the next 10 years. We have to do that without displacing anyone during the interim renovation or at the end, which is also very important for everyone, so that people who live there now, their children can go to schools, they can go to the doctors, places of worship, and the like. But we also want to make sure that we're setting the stage through the land use changes that will happen over the next couple of years, so that the mixed-use development along Columbia Pike can be beneficial for the tax base, as well as creating an extraordinary place for the county. So the combination of working together on both policy and procedures, we look forward to be able to commence the construction on Alpha I, as well as the many other phases that will happen right behind it. And we just want to commend the courage that everyone's had over the last couple of years as we've gone through this process. I'll hand it over to my colleague, David Hildy, who will go through some of the specifics that we went through. But I want to thank not only our capital partners, the service providers, but also the staff working through over the last two years to make this financing plan a reality that will set the stage for success over the next 10 years.
Thank you, Jair. Hi, I'm David Hildy with Jair Lynch Real Estate Partners. And I just wanted to walk through kind of our process a little bit, and again, like Jair said, how we're excited about what we can deliver here at Barcraft. First, just want to start back, when we acquired the property, we took a resident-first approach. That first year was really about getting to know our residents. You know, one, we did home walks, just looking for deferred maintenance, just to make sure the property was operating how we wanted it. We brought in a new property management partner in Gates Hudson. We completed a resident survey to understand needs. We started connecting residents with services and have an onsite resident services team. Then we also started an engagement process to inform the MFDP and the needs of the residents in terms of scope of renovations, amenities we could provide, and really continued with a lot of communication, started town halls, we started recently the monthly screenings to answer any questions and concerns residents may have. Next slide, please. Back in October of 2022, we submitted a master finance and development plan to the county manager. And this plan, we've gone over some of the commitments that were in this, and like Jair said, we wanted to propose something as a baseline that was something that took into account the needs of our residents and the financial considerations. We proposed that rent stabilization is one of the most important things at this project. And so in our MFDP, we stated that any residents up to 60% AMI would continue to pay their existing rent capped at 3%, even as they went back into a new unit. And we understand there's a lot of work to do with the county. As Melissa mentioned, we spent now another year working together, but we knew there were solutions for those over-income as well. Next slide. This is the update through that year of collaboration with the county, with our residents, with Amazon. We have been able to, one, make the commitment that those earning up to 80% AMI are eligible for the rent stabilization commitments, and those earning over 80%, as Melissa mentioned, we are committed to providing unrenovated homes at the site, and when those are unavailable, we will move them into new buildings with the commitment, rent stabilization commitments. And also, the commitment to at least 10% of the affordable homes, 134 total, earning up to 30% AMI. As Melissa mentioned, this will be done, each phase may vary based on the financial needs of each one, but overall, that is a commitment we are making together that at least 10%. Again, 134 homes would be for the 30% AMI levels. Next slide. Again, just a recap of the plan, the affordability plan. Again, ensure no resident displacement, one of our commitments to do that. We started with stabilizing rent for all, providing new units to our residents, and the deepening of affordability, and also just to continuing to connect with our residents and provide connections to those services as we go through this process. The county has a lot of great programs, and we want to make sure that our residents are taking advantage of those. And on the current rent protections, just want to point out that initially, we had a concept of, you know, if you're there at the time of acquisition, we're committed to no displacement, but there was nothing for those who may have moved in two days after. But we are making the commitment in this plan that all existing residents who are living at Barcraft at the time we proceed with the renovation or replacement of their home and are compliant with their leases will be granted these protections. So anyone living at Barcraft today will be eligible for rent stabilization. Next slide. Again, we have extensive renovation program. Some of the homes will be replaced as envisioned in the Form-Based Code to make way for new development along Columbia Pike. A lot of this was informed through the engagement process. Point out the washer and dryers, that was a favorite among the residents and the highest request, and we're excited to be able to provide that to our residents. Next slide. One of our other commitments is trying to make this process as seamless as we can. We know that anytime anyone has to move from homes, it's a process, and it's inconvenient, and that's why we brought on a national specialist who, their business is to help in these relocations. We are committed to, you know, 120 days' notice, but really, effectively, we're communicating as soon as we know in advance to help everyone prepare for this. The tenant relocation plan will be considered in each phase by the tenant landlord commission. We expect renovations of each building to take nine to six months. We will do it in phases in each section, so we won't move everyone out at once, but we'll go building by building. And any of the moving expenses will be paid for through Jair Lynch. And again, we'll have an onsite team through our housing-to-home specialists who will help all the residents manage this process and make accommodations as needed. And then we would be, residents, again, 80% and below will be able to move back into the project. Again, 80% and above, due to the federal sources we are pursuing to finance this, they will be not eligible to move back in. So again, we've made that commitment to find them another place at Barcraft. And next slide. And then just to summarize, as Jair mentioned, we're taking a balanced approach here. Again, we're, this is not just one project, this is multiple projects, and not just for one term. We have made at acquisition here a commitment together, this is a 99-year commitment, to preserving affordability at this project. And so we are excited to work together with the county and Amazon to create a sustainable approach where we can deliver on these commitments as we do this first phase and beyond, over the life of this project. The other piece here is we also work together to leverage additional tools. One area is, as Melissa mentioned, the land use side. We will be going in 2024, we'll be putting forth our proposed master plan, which does a few things. One important thing to the financing plan is adjusting the conservation area, which has a real impact on financing, but also providing some more new units to renovation units and making sure we have an optimal mix. And so again, that change and other, you know, technical and common sense adjustments to the Form-Based Codes will be a part of a 2024 process. Second, utilizing income averaging. It helps us to be able to provide the rent stabilization commitments. But again, this is a most affordable housing, the federal financing targeted 60% AMI, but they have recently provided the ability to go up to 80 to offset, to really provide some deepened affordability. And we're excited to use that approach. And the other also important thing that does is that now, that's why we're able to commit to any of our residents earning up to 80% qualified to move back into a light tech project. And then we've been talking a lot with the county about seeking other affordable housing sources and grants. You have the HUD Housing Grant before you today, but there are lots of other sources that we are going to be pursuing together to, again, keep improving on this and also just making sure that we are putting out the best financial plan for Barcraft. So with that, we will, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hildy and Mr. Lynch. Before we get to any questions, we will hear from our advisory commission, our housing commission. Ms. Blake, you can feel free to take the seat next to Ms. Donowski and speak from the comfort of a seated position.
We need you to press the button on the microphone.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So I would like to start out by saying the housing commission is overwhelmingly in support of the Barcraft project. The commission voted 9-0 with one abstention to support the staff recommendation and improve the plan. Also use this opportunity to thank Jair Lynch Real Estate Partners, sorry, a little nervous, and county staff for bringing forward a proposal that provides site-wide affordability and achieves many of the affordable housing master plan goals. During our most recent meeting, the housing commission made an approved motion to recommend to the county board to include in the master financing and development plan an aspirational goal to house 255 units at or below 30% AMI on the Barcraft site. The commissioners in favor of the aspirational goal to house 255 households at or below 30% AMI on the Barcraft site view it as a critical aspect of the county's commitment to preserving Arlington's economic diversity. Documenting this aspirational goal within the master financing and development plan is an important guiding element of the land use planning for the Barcraft site, and it could become more achievable over time when or if the financial environment for the site improves. The need to protect the financial viability of the project was a priority for all the housing commissioners. However, the commissioners in favor of the documented aspirational goal believe it can ultimately be accomplished over time using a combination of financing, income averaging, 9% tax credits, and land use tools, but also certainly understand Jair Lynch's point made today about responsible policy, which is why we're talking about a documented aspirational goal. So I'll close by restating the housing commission's enthusiastic support for the project, and our recommendation at the county board ensures the master financing plan, the master financing and development plan include an explicit written aspirational commitment to produce over the 10-year phasing period 255 units hardwired at or below 30% AMI for at least 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, so we are now going to move to public testimony. And just for note, if anyone would like any accommodations as it relates to interpretation to participate in the public comment, I'm sorry, in the regular hearing item for this, we will have someone new who will be providing those services. So please check with our clerk if there's any difficulty. So, Mr. Barrera, do we have any public speakers?
Yes. The first two public speakers are Sal Reyes, followed by Esther N.
Good morning. Good to see you all. I'm Sal Reyes with Bogota Tenants Association. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chair, county board members, Mr. County Manager, staff, and Jair Lynch for the work that you've done to get to this point. I want to thank you for that tremendous work in saving Barcraft and working to preserve the affordability and community. Many of us, organizations and advocates, have presented to you data and analysis on further deepening affordability at Barcraft. You know, we have been working with and joined the Arlington Community Foundation on this effort because we know that the need is there and will be there as the property is converted to tax credit with light tech rules. There will be households that will need to split, and so there will be a need for that deeper affordability. And also, as you identified, you know, households where you're meeting with them, and you identified that the principal leaseholder may not be there, and it's someone else that stayed in the apartment, you're going to find more of those households in there. So as we approach the finish line in this process of the financing and development plan, and as you consider the document today, we ask that you ensure that Barcraft allows future lower-income residents the opportunity to live at Barcraft and to thrive and enjoy our community with stability in their life, being able to afford rent. Therefore, we ask that you ensure that master financing development plan includes the goal of producing a base of 255 units at 30% AMI, which will allow the preservation of the current community, as well as allow that in the future, the diversity remains and it's not lost. We have come a long way since December 2021, when we made the decision to make this investment. We look forward to you ensuring the commitment to build the deeper affordability at Barcraft. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
The next two speakers are Esther N. The next two speakers are Esther N., followed by Ann Vordebrugge.
Vordebrugge, but we'll give you an A for effort.
My apologies. And Esther requires translation services, Rosa, if you wouldn't mind coming to the front.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Esther Nunez. Estoy de parte del grupo de Barcroft tenant. Estoy aquí porque estoy preocupada por el proceso de renovación.
Good morning, my name is Esther Nunez. I'm here representing the Barcroft, a group of Barcroft tenants. I'm here because I'm very concerned about a process of renovation.
Jire Lynch no tiene claro que hace que un inquilino sea elegible, como dice en su contrato de arrendamiento.
Jire Lynch, it's not clear of what a tenant has to do or how the tenant is eligible, like on the renting agreement.
Esto es realmente importante para nosotros porque queremos transparencia y queremos que quede por escrito cuáles son los requisitos.
This is very important for us because we want transparency and we want in a reading statement, what are the requirements?
No queremos que los inquilinos se vean obligados a marcharse solo porque no pueden cumplir con estos requisitos.
We don't want the tenants to be obligated or forced to leave the premises because they cannot comply with the requirements.
Hay muchas diferentes maneras en que se puede expulsar a las personas.
There are different ways that you can ask a tenant to leave that place.
Además, tenemos otra preocupación de la que hablan muchos inquilinos.
We also are very concerned, other, after hearing all the tenants, we are very concerned of what are the things that they have to say.
Jire Lynch nos dijo que si no queríamos firmar el contrato de arrendamiento en línea, podíamos pedir que lo imprimieran.
Jire Lynch told us that if we couldn't sign the agreement online, we can order a printing agreement.
Pero muchos inquilinos dicen que se vieron obligados a crear un correo electrónico y firmarlo en línea.
But many tenants told us that they were forced to create a, an email address, and they had, they were forced to sign online the document.
Queremos que Jire Lynch cumpla con su compromiso, con el acuerdo que hicimos con ellos a principio de este año. A principio de este año para poder renovar el contrato de la forma tradicional para hacerlo accesible a todos.
We want that Jire Lynch comply with the agreement that we had at the beginning of the year, so we can renew the contract in a traditional way, meaning in print, not online.
Queremos acceder al informe que Jire Lynch envía al condado cada mes.
We want to have access to the information that Jire Lynch is sending to the county every month.
Nosotros los inquilinos de Barcroft estamos trabajando en un plan sobre cómo nos gustaría participar en todo este proceso para defender nuestro bienestar y asegurarnos de que todo sea lo mejor para nosotros.
We want to have access, we want to have access to the old information that Jire Lynch is sending to the county every month. All the tenants in Barcroft, we want, we are working together to develop this plan and to inform what would you, we'd like to participate in the process, and we want to defend our rights, and we want to make sure that everything that we are asking is provided for us.
Exigimos que ponga al menos 255 unidades o más a disposición del 30% por debajo.
Can that be the concluding point, please? Thank you.
We are demanding that at least 255 units will be affordable under the 30%.
El 10% de unidades de las 1334 unidades en un AMI del 30% es inaceptable, y sé que todos ustedes pueden hacerlo mejor.
10% of the units out of the 1,334 of the AMI is unacceptable, and we know that you can develop a better plan for us.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I apologize here, I'm assuming to having some technical difficulties with the timer. So, the next person will be Ann Vordebrugge, and followed by Audrey Clement.
Good morning. I'm speaking on behalf of the Arlington Community Foundation. We stand strong in our desire that our lowest-income neighbors belong here. We and 19 other organizations have urged that 255 units be hardwired for long-term affordability at 30% AMI at Barcroft at full buildout. 255 is symbolic in that it reflects the number of households at that income level living at Barcroft at the time of purchase. We know current residents are protected by rent stabilization, but we also believe that deeper affordability should not expire when the current residents move on. What you and Jire Lynch and Amazon have made happen up to this point is truly remarkable. We acknowledge the sobering financial dynamics at play and the need to protect the viability of this deal. However, we believe that our goal can ultimately be accomplished using land use and other tools that have not yet been explored. Having only 134 CAFs at 30% AMI and the remaining ones at 60, as currently proposed, does not nearly meet the need of the hundreds that have always called Barcroft their home and will put even more pressure on housing grant funds there and across the county. It's important to frame that 255 30% CAFs would only be 7% of the 3,500 units projected at full buildout. We also hope over time that there will be 40 and 50% units onsite to better match the spectrum of need. Speaking personally for just a moment, I've lived in Arlington for 43 years, and I've been working on behalf of our children, youth, and families and people on the margins for the last 35. I live in 22204. Over those years, I've witnessed you and your predecessors move mountains to support world-class infrastructure, schools, pools, economic development plans, and smart growth. But in the midst of all that, we need to take a step back from all the projections and negotiations and reflect on the humanity in our midst. Christian, Matt, Tanya, Libby, Takas, and Mark, I have personally seen each one of you deeply moved when you are hearing directly from residents who are struggling to make ends meet. You subscribe to a county vision to be not only world-class, but inclusive and caring as well. Here's an opportunity not to be missed to reflect that vision on paper as a planning goal. The foundation asks that you commit in writing to the aspirational goal of 255 30% units at full buildout, and that this goal be a guiding feature in each planning stage in the future. Thank you for your partnership in this important work. Tanya, thank you for your service. And Christian, all the best to you and thank you.
Thank you. Right back at you, Ms. Vordebrugge, as you look to your transition as well.
Give me one second to just adjust the clock. The next speaker will be Audrey Clement, followed by Wells.
Barcroft Apartments Affordable Housing Financing Plan is an enormously complex deal to restructure the original Barcroft Apartments purchase loans to enable buyer Jire Lynch to qualify for money from VHDA to renovate some of the units. The documents describing this deal consist of dozens of pages of single-spaced legalese first made available to the public on or about December the 14th. Aside from the lack of transparency in providing such short notice, there are serious questions about the long-term financial viability of Jire Lynch's plans to renovate the site. For example, in explaining why it can't provide more than 134 CAF units available at 30% AMI, the staff report says, quote, "For example, debt service on the $150 million line of credit the county used to fund the original loan currently carries $9 million in annual debt service interest only. This is more than four times what was originally projected in, for 2023 and 2021. The difference is coming directly out of the county's annual AHIF appropriation. This puts a strain on the ability for the county to undertake new affordable housing projects," end of quote. That is an understatement, considering that AHIF's total appropriation for FY '24 is $20.5 million. Another issue is the cost of renovating 93 units, which Jire Lynch puts at about $26.7 million. Add to that the $29.6 million acquisition cost of the units, and the total per-unit cost comes to more than $600,000. Compare this cost to the per-unit cost of new apartments at Gillian Place, about $410,000 in 2019, Queens Court, $439,000 in 2021, and Ballston Station, $583,000 in 2023. The high exorbitant per-unit cost of Barcroft Apartments is due to the mostly grossly inflated purchase price of $425 million, or three times the $138 million assessed value of the dilapidated property at the time of sale. Jire Lynch insists that the bidding process was competitive. Forget that the original slumlord was gifted $425 million for 75 years of neglect. Stakeholders should get over it and move on. That may not be possible, considering that these cost estimates are only for 93 of the 1,335 units. At the same rate, the cost of renovating the remaining units would be over $350 million, or 17 times AHIF's annual budget. Thank you.
Yeah, next speaker.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wells Harrell, followed by Alice Hogan, for five minutes each.
Good morning, Chair Dorsey, members of the board. My name is Wells Harrell, and it's my privilege this morning to speak on behalf of NAACP Arlington Branch in enthusiastic support of the Barcroft Apartments project. It would have been really easy a few years ago for the county to have done nothing. The Barcroft property was the, and remains the county's largest stock of market-rate affordable homes. When the property was first put up for sale, the county could have sat on the sidelines, allowed another private developer to swoop in and buy it, leaving them free to raise rents or redevelop by rights. Instead, the county partnered with an established affordable housing developer to buy the property, protect its residents, and realize an opportunity to achieve important affordable housing goals. The extraordinary benefits of this project have already been highlighted by the staff in Jire Lynch. Mitting over 1,300 homes for 99 years that will be affordable to households earning 60% of the area median income, capping rent increases, preventing displacement, renovating the apartments, and preserving 10% of the committed affordable homes for our lowest-income households. The one thing, as Ann said earlier, that would make the project even more beneficial is to add an aspirational commitment, even if it's just aspirational best efforts, to hardwire even more deeply affordable homes, as I urged in my public comments to the board on November 11th. This project really exemplifies Arlington's approach to affordable housing. We don't have a public housing authority, so we have to rely on a combination of private-public partnerships and public money and tax credits in order to make it all work. Now, we heard some criticism of the overall approach both today and last month at the county board meeting on the Langston Boulevard plan. Two of them struck me as just at the time so unfair and misleading that they really stuck with me, and they're relevant here today because addressing them can illuminate exactly how this project at Barcroft can deliver its benefits for the county and our residents. The first criticism was about the tax impacts of residential development, the claim being that residential development tends to cost more than it generates in tax revenue. But it's only true for some types of development. You see, market-rate apartments are moneymakers. They yield APS students at low rates and otherwise don't require much by way of other county services, but they generate significant tax revenue, as we're now seeing going into the next budget cycle, where we're having to rely more on residential properties to pick up the slack for commercial vacancies. Now, it's true that some forms of residential development, like low-density subdivisions with detached houses, tend to consume more public services than they generate in tax revenue because they tend to send more kids to school, and the properties themselves don't realize as much per acre. And there's an extent to which committed affordable homes may be the same, but to whatever extent that's true, that's by design. They're subsidized, that's how they become affordable for 99 years, and that's as it should be. It reflects a shared commitment, especially by those who are more fortunate in our county, to support our lowest-income neighbors and make sure they have affordable homes. The second criticism was about reducing the proportion of low-to-moderate income residents, as though this is somehow a zero-sum game. But proportion is not the same as population. We want to make sure that the income mix at Barcroft isn't such that low-income residents and modern-income residents feel like they are forced out because they can't afford rents. We want to keep them there. But adding other residents to take over new market-rate affordable homes is not a detriment. We need the value that is provided by new market-rate homes to create that subsidy for committed affordable homes. That is how affordable housing works here. It also reminds me of a truism that I shared at the meeting on Plan Langston, and it is simply this, that homes are good, more homes are good, and we need more of them. When we create more homes, we allow workers to be closer to their jobs, kids can be closer to their schools and their friends, and we all enjoy benefits like more customers who are business in transit, broader tax base, and a healthier economy. I think I said then, and I will say it again here, that neighborhoods are people. They're not the buildings, they're the people. People are the community. We have an important community here at Barcroft. We deserve to do, they deserve protection by the county, so let's do right by them. I want to close by thanking the staff, Jire Lynch, and this board, and I want to give special thanks to you, Chair Dorsey, for your leadership on this project and for your service of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell.
Next speaker is Alice Hogan, followed by Lou Z.
Good morning, I'm Alice Hogan with the Alliance for Housing Solutions. I want to make sure you can hear me.
We can, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. The Alliance for Housing Solutions is pleased to support the Barcroft Apartments affordability and financing plan. The purchase and preservation, as you've heard of this market rate property of 1,335 units in late 2021 was extraordinary, and our county is the better for preserving and stabilizing so many homes for our hard-working neighbors. AHS and our partners are grateful to the county and to Amazon and to the new owner, Jire Lynch, for the hard work that has taken place since the purchase date to fulfill the commitments of preservation without displacement of the hundreds of families that call Barcroft home. Jire Lynch has promised to preserve these units for 99 years at up to 60% of AMI with zero displacement of all current residents, and with a cap of no more than 3% rent increase each year for all residents during the duration of their time on the property. This is an extraordinary accomplishment to celebrate, knowing that Arlington County helped avert the mass displacement of families at Barcroft, which we were unable to avoid at Arna Valley Apartments nearly 25 years ago. In addition, there are several other aspects of the plan we wanted to highlight. The initial renovation of these first 93 units will include converting 18 of them into three- and four-bedroom units, which are in very high demand in Arlington and carry very high rents. These expanded units are a welcome addition for larger families residing at Barcroft. This plan also makes room for permanent supportive housing units, helping us meet another one of our county housing goals as outlined in our Affordable Housing Master Plan. At the time of the purchase, the resident census included 255 households earning 30% of AMI, or approximately $45,000 a year. AHS and our coalition partners maintain the aspirational goal of preserving the same number of units at 30% AMI. The current plan preserves 134 of those very low-income units, or 10% of the CAFs, as hardwired in the plan. We applaud this remarkable commitment, especially in this difficult financial environment. We applaud this remarkable commitment, especially in this difficult financial environment, and we are pleased that preserving these 134 is being considered a floor and not a ceiling. And it does bring us halfway to that initial goal. If Arlington is to achieve its recently articulated goal to, quote, "end homelessness by 2026", it will need those 134 and many, as many more as possible at that AMI level across our county. In a changing financial market, perhaps new tools or new funding will emerge, or more value will be identified with additional density on the site over the life of this project that could offset additional subsidy for more 30% units. In the meantime, we do point out the need for units to be available at a broader range of income at Barcroft, from 30% to 40%, 50%, all the way up to 80% AMI. We need to keep in mind that with inflation, the salary of today's 60% AMI units will be tomorrow's 30% AMI households, as lower wages do not keep up with increasing rents. For example, today, a 60% AMI family of four makes $90,000 a year, and even at that income level is eligible for affordable units in Arlington. And lastly, we applaud the county for allocating 115 million toward paying down the principal of the $150 million loan to buy the property. That payment will save the county nearly $1 million in debt service every year out of our AHIF. And as the subsequent renovation and development phases unfold, AHS encourages the county to identify a more appropriate funding source for Barcroft loan payments. Then the AHIF, which is a revolving loan fund used to aid in the expansion of our CAF portfolio. Making interest payments on the acquisition loan out of the AHIF is handcuffing that fund from supporting other important affordable housing projects that are in our development pipeline. It is imperative that the county find and utilize another source for those payments. In conclusion, we commend staff at the county, Jire Lynch, and Amazon for envisioning and sustaining this incredibly complicated and very impactful project to transform and expand Barcroft Apartments. We look forward to this team seeking opportunities for additional, deeper affordability, and we encourage the county to continue to seek alternative financial sources to fund its Barcroft debt obligations. Thank you to everyone involved, and congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Mr. Barrera, are there any other speakers?
The last speaker is Luz T.
My name is Luz Tovar. I'm with La Colectiva. We have been organizing with Barcroft tenants since January of 2022. We need an affordability housing plan that meets the true needs of our community. 10 units of the 1,334 units at a 30% AMI is still unacceptable. We need, Arlington can do much better. There is a report by the Arlington Foundation on how this is possible, at least 255 units at a 30% AMI income as a part of the Barcroft apartment program-wide affordability housing plan. Affordable housing must be a reality that meets the need of the Barcroft community. This commitment is not just a promise, but a lifeline, addressing the pressuring demand for deeper affordability and upholding the county's obligation to serve, guard the Barcroft community for generations. The reality of the families are, I'm sorry, the reality is that the families are earning less than, and paying rent at a higher rate than what they can afford. With rent being out of control and wages not increasing for our community, the migrant community is faced with discrimination and oppression lifestyle here. We want a better quality of life and for our community to remain in Arlington. The plan for affordable housing says that the housing grant program in Arlington can help, but it only works if certain requirements are met. For instance, one of the requirements is that you have to have citizen status, and the majority of tenants in Barcroft are migrant communities, so not everyone is already going to meet those requirements. We want a, and also the budget cut. It seems like for next year, there's going to be a budget cut around $25 to $40 million less than needed, so we need a better solution, not just rely on the support, what the county can offer with the housing grant. We're asking if Arlington really stands with diversity and equity. This is the time for you to show the community of Barcroft that you can, that you stand with them to make sure they have 255 units or more at a 30% AMI. Columbia Pike is getting gentrified, and many community members have already been displaced. This is the reality of the actions taken by letting Amazon into our community. Amazon fuels the cost of living and displaces communities of color. Barcroft Apartments is home for many communities of colors and elderly who have lived in Barcroft for over 30 years. Together, we urge you to recognize the urgency of our call, to stand with community, and to ensure that Barcroft apartment-wide affordable housing reflects the true essence of affordability, justice, and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. And if that concludes our regular hearing, speakers, the discussion is now with the board. Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Okay, colleagues, any questions before we maybe get into considering a motion?
Do you have a clarifying question?
Yeah, clarifying, or, you know?
I have a couple.
Sure, please, Ms. Lento.
Thank you. So, my first question is to staff, and this is just, I think, technical or clarifications, really clarifying. We have that slide that shows the demographics, but there's no listing of Hispanic. And I recognize that it's race-based, but I think for a discussion today, it'd be important to try to decipher that ethnicity. I know I read in some material that some of these surveys are based on, you know, there was not, I know that in reading some of the reports, there were surveys that did not ask for race or ethnicity out of respect for the community, but I'm not sure if that graph reflects it. And so when we're talking about the diversity and who we're serving there, if we can just look at how to include data, I, as one community member, do not support how the census categorizes the Latino and Hispanic race. I think it makes us invisible in stats like this. I know that there's a lot of advocacy from other Latino community members nationwide for different purposes, but I don't know how to fix that, but to the extent that we can demonstrate where our community actually is reflective of. And if we can't note it, at least have an asterisk saying that in the white statistics, it also includes the Hispanic population, although not denoted for these particular reasons, or something of that nature, so that at least there's a place where someone can see that. So I appreciate that. Then, the other question I had is for the applicant. So first, thank you for being here today. Thank you for this phenomenal project that you're bringing to our community and partnering with us to make that happen. You are committed to building one-for-one units that are currently in existence at a committed affordable system, and then you'll be developing mixed-use at other parts of that property. Does that mixed-use development have any guarantees on it? Like, we're guaranteeing this committed affordable section for 99 years, but that mixed-use development is a private industry in all respects of how we look at corporate and private developers. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We will be developing components of the site after we take care of the residents, the existing residents, and building the 1,334. We'll also be building mixed-use development with private capital, with no federal subsidies. It'll be mixed-use, commercial, and the like, and there will be no covenants that would be associated with those developments.
So at any point in time, that property could sell, could turn into condos, could be done, what all types of properties do over the course of the next 100 years?
That's correct, but there will be no, the 99-year covenant will be associated with the 1,300 units that will be developed. There will be no covenants on the balance, and so we do see an economic development having multiple different asset classes, whether it's commercial, whether it's for-sale, whether it's apartments, whether it's office, if we ever get back to office, and so we see the full gamut.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful for how I'm processing and hearing our advocates. And then I have one more clarifying question, Chair Dorsey. I can?
Please, keep it going.
Thank you. And then, I just want to clarify, it's going up to 60% AMI when it's completely built, so anyone above 60% AMI will not qualify to live there, except for the existing tenants. Is that correct? I thought I read both, and I'm a little bit confused whether it'll go up to 80% or is it cropping at 60% once the development is complete for our committed affordable?
The Affordable Housing Program, Section 42, otherwise known as the Low-Income Tax Credit Program, has revised rules to allow for income averaging that allows for projects to get up to 80%. We see the bulk of our residents already at Barcroft. Of the 1,334, I believe about 1,100 people were actually living at Barcroft day one. So the bulk of our residents and bulk of what we're building is for the existing residents, and so the 80% of residents that are, 80% below residents that are there now will have the benefit of moving into the, and have the protections of the LIHTC program as well as a renovated unit.
Okay, and then one last question. And I've seen this work in different ways. I know it's a difficult question, but just that we can understand the technicalities of it, if you are an undocumented community member or in a mixed-status family, living now at a market-rate affordable, are there barriers to, you know, once it's a committed affordable and it has all the federal loans and sort of the, that sort of the restrictions that come with engaging in a project like that, does that create a barrier for them to qualify, or can they show income in different ways that would allow them to provide proof of income and qualify for?
There's been significant advocacy happening at the national level to make sure that the Low-Income Tax Credit Program, probably the most successful affordable housing program that has been produced by the federal government, does not create that extra barrier for undocumented people.
Do we anticipate that there'll be changes moving forward, or there'll be flexibility in documents?
There could be.
There could be.
I think that's.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, why don't we go this side to start, Mr. Karantounas?
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Thank you for bringing that to this conclusion today. That's a great day for everybody, for a very long marathon of work. I have a couple of questions. First and foremost, the issue of rent stabilization, especially for you, Mr. Lynch, and your team. So you said that, I understand that rent stabilization is provided for those households who cannot make right now the rent, because 60% AMI, as Ms. Talendo just indicated, is really a lot of money for a very lot, for people, and there is an additional problem that there is nothing out there. If somebody gets displaced from Barcroft, for whatever reason, there is zero other opportunities in Arlington, or near zero. So how does this work? What is the level of, you know, assurance? I'm not saying guarantee, assurance that is offered right now to low, moderate and low-income tenants, and for how, and how is it financed?
Yeah, so we're currently in a process of going through renewal process to, one, get everyone on a one-year lease, and also, in our commitment, we, again, it's a cap up to 3%. Our staff welcomes if anyone is not able to afford that 3% increase to come in, talk with the staff, and we will not give that 3% increase. So to date, we've done about 750 renewals of the 1,100, and of those, we have, we had 25 so far that have requested 0% increases and received it, and a handful that were in between 0 and 3%. But that is a, you know, we work with our residents on an individual basis. That's why it's taking so long to get through all the residents to renew them to leases, because we want to make sure we have the time for each of them to go through and understand their situation.
Okay, so we heard also testimony here that renewing a lease is not a very straightforward story, so the online availability, I mean, I'm keeping reminded of the digital divide is not straightforward, so how does this affect? And if you allow an additional sub-question to this, so do we, do we keep track of, if some tenants leave Barcroft, why this is the case, and whether, you know, affordability is a trigger?
Yes, so the first part to Esther's comment, there is the ability to do printed, and, you know, we will, we will look into that if that's an issue, and I encourage her to, yeah, reach out again to the property management office, but we're committed to doing in-person, digital, whatever works for the resident. That is what the property management team has been aiming to do, so we will follow up on that. To the second point of move-outs, we absolutely track anyone who vacates the property, the reasons. In this period where we've gone through the 750 leases, we've had 54 move-outs, and, you know, the top reason was just moving out of the area, that's 30%. The other top two were moving closer to work or even purchasing a home. So that makes up 70%, and the others are just, you know, roommate situation, military transfer, all the reasons you typically see in an apartment. So we do track that, and we are very careful about reviewing that every month.
Thank you. For the first, I yield for the first.
Yeah, thank you. And I was gonna ask, I have two, two sort of very different, different questions, but one, Mr. Karantounas is really kind of taken care of. For this whole time period, we hear from you all, and I think it's great, all of the ways you're reaching out to people, all of the ways you're guaranteeing that people can stay, and then we keep hearing people saying it's not transparent, we don't know. I'm guessing that the disconnect is probably mostly because you are doing it on an individual, one-by-one-by-one basis. Really hard to be totally transparent when everything is different. Is that a reasonable assumption on my part?
Well, we've been trying to approach multiple channels, again, to this point of how do we get the information out? So the property manager, the staff does flyers to every door, they do postings in the existing laundry rooms, we have a resident portal, again, digital access, but that, we always push out information there, have it available in the property management office. As Melissa mentioned in the beginning, we've been very focused on translation services, so making sure we translate into the primary languages and get that out. And then, on top of that, then providing that individual ability. So we're trying to hit as many of these channels as possible to communicate and, you know, continue committed to pursuing all those avenues.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. And I actually just sort of a general, say, anybody wants to send me later some information about somewhere else that's doing it better, I'd be interested to know, because it feels like you guys are doing really incredible work, and if there's somewhere else that's a better model, I'd be interested to know about that, not right now, but by email, however people want to get that to me. And then the other question, you know, the other big issue we're getting about is deepened, is the affordability issue, and I wanted to have more that are guaranteed or committed at the 30% AMI. I think to some extent, it's a miracle this is still holding together, because when we started this, it was really by our fingernails, and then interest rates, like, more than doubled, right? I mean, it's amazing. My understanding is that in all of these agreements, there is a commitment to deepening the affordability if there are more funds that become available, and that's kind of already in the agreement, so that should interest rates come down, things come better, we find, get better, the government, federal government finally decides maybe it's really going to step in in a bigger way, and that you can deepen the affordability and have more committed at the lower rate, the 30% AMI, that you would do that, and I'm assuming from our staff, we'd probably even have some leverage to encourage you to do that, because we're kind of, we're going to be connected for a while. Is that a reasonable assumption? Am I understanding that correctly, that it's really written in, that we will deepen if we can?
Yeah, no, in our, in our agreement, there is a concept that, again, we're proposing a minimum commitment, working with the county on any funds that we bring in. There's also the balance of, Melissa mentioned, the phase-in reserve to make sure we can execute this project, any of the county's considerations of repayment. So there's multiple considerations that we'll be balancing and working very closely with the county. This is a partnership that will continue for many years to address.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the partnership quite a bit. I think we all do, and I think we all need to be cognizant in these tight, and how tenuous some of this is. It's just, it's really not all done. It's going to be a little tenuous as the economy continues, as it is with interest rates for a while, that you have to be viable, because when you go out to the market for loans and things like that, I'm sorry, they don't come to these meetings, and that's, it's just totally by the numbers, and you've got to make those numbers come out. And that's something that I'm very aware of when it comes to approving this, so really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Franti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to pick up right where Vice Chair Garvey was sharing, and a question, a refresher really for Ms. Danowski regarding, so our commitment here on the 30% below is for 99 years. I cannot, I think it varies. Our typical commitments in AHIF-based projects are for 30 or 60 years. I don't actually know the balance there. We often re-up after 30 years, we'll refinance, but can you, just not to the precise percentage, but do I, can you share a little bit of the typical balance that we would do, that we have on our books in most financing agreements? typical balance that we would do, that we have on our books in most financing agreements?
Yes, thank you for that question. First off, I want to say that the 99-year affordability period is the longest affordability period in the county's portfolio. Typically, past projects have been affordable up to 60 or 75 years typically. And the 30% AMI units would be affordable for that 99-year period. And I also want to note that the commitment to the 134 units up to 30% AMI is, as well, the largest commitment in the county's portfolio of 30% AMI units to date.
Thank you, Ms. Danowski. Sort of, as I continue to try and get a handle on the investment here and think things through, one concern of mine as we prepare for this meeting was about the phases and the timing. And I think this is to, to Mr. Lynch, or Mr. Hillby, regarding, but it also could be staff. I tried to look pretty carefully in the various attachments to make sure that as we reached the 134 units, we're not backloading that so that the last couple of projects, and I think are where most of the units are done. And I think that if I'm reading right, it's in the table-based attachment, I think about page four, that there's a specific agreement that we, that each stage, there has to be an agreement. So, if we were to be more successful in the early stages on financing, interest rates come down. But it's clear, is, do I have the right place in the various agreements where that is captured? That after each agreement, there has to be a new binding agreement that would make sure that we're not backloading? And I don't know whether that's probably, could be for Ms. Danowski first, and then Mr. Hillby.
Yes, thank you. So, first, in regards to the number of 30% AMI units in each phase moving forward, we will be looking at each individual phase's unique financing considerations to determine the exact amount. It is anticipated, for example, that the second renovation phase will include 30% AMI units. Again, the term sheets do say that when each project comes forward, we'll also be tracking that 30% AMI unit commitment to essentially make sure, as you said, that we are achieving 30% units, not only with the new construction projects, but also with the renovation projects moving forward.
Great, I think that takes care of it. And so, I think this is the last kind of question, or this is a, I guess it would be a question probably again first for Ms. Danowski. But I found pages 14 to 16 of the staff report pretty helpful on the details and the numbers of this. One question that I've been having, you know, as in the course of the discussion of income averaging, the net, as I understand it, the net increased cost, there's a mention of income averaging not being able to accomplish everything because of the actual, what we think are the actual incomes. But it's my understanding that we're talking probably at least 150, 170,000, could be even more, to bring a unit permanently, and I understand it well, into the 200,000s, to bring a unit permanently into the 30% and below for 99 years. Is that, do I have a range there? I guess it would be a little difficult to precisely count, account for this because we are capping rent increases at 3% per year. But it occurs to me that there's so many more families that we would like to help, and that there is some, some sort of scarcity eventually of resources that even as much as we want to do, that would be a challenge. And so, I don't know if you have any comments, either Ms. Venezia or, or Ms. Danowski regarding the cost of doing these more deeply affordable pieces and units?
Thank you, yes. There is, there is a cost to these units and an impact on the financing, both the upfront subsidy and then the subsidy that's required, just the subsidy that's required to operate the property. Oftentimes, the revenue collected from 30% AMI units don't cover just regular operating expenses. In terms of that upfront subsidy, you know, 30% AMI units can, to essentially to underwrite them down from 60% AMI to 30% AMI can be 200,000 or more. I don't have an exact number here today, though.
Got it. I'll yield, I would say that there's, it feels like there's competing desires here to not have individuals relocate and keep folks who are currently living, and I can only say that that is a very big priority. If we think about 60 or 70 years from now, what our community will look like, I don't know entirely. I know I will not be here. And so, you know, that is a little bit, seems a little bit relevant as you're thinking about the long-term future of our community. I don't think any would say we should bake in and ensure that we would have to have a too, too heavy 60, 70% concentration of our lowest income in one neighborhood. So, I feel like there's a balance that we're trying to seek here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, just one question for me, and I see you have a round two?
Yes, it was a follow-up question.
Why don't you do your follow-up?
It's about the, how we apportion the deep affordability as we go with the first phases of redevelopment, if it's congruent with your question.
No, mine is totally different, so ask your question.
The question is the following, one of the challenges here is to stretch the housing dollar, right? To, and especially when it comes to buy down the assets, the affordability, because this is actually the most affordable way to, you know, create this, this level of deep affordability. So, it's absolutely critical to know what happens when we go from, you know, in the next phase. So, the first phase, will, will we ask for a number of, of deep affordable units? And then, are we looking at the, what is the, what is the trigger threshold here? So, for example, if in a, in a, any phase, a new building, a 15% for any, any financial reason, a 15% number of, of deep affordable units is provided, will we slack and say, we'll not pressure for more? Or is it something that we just take into account, we report and we project towards the, you know, foreseeable future and we say this, we are on track and we will try to get to these units? This is, for me, very important to gauge how we are going to pursue even more than the minimum that we say that we need to pursue here.
Thank you. So, I think if I'm understanding correctly, as each phase goes forward, we will look carefully at the financing to see the number of 30% AMI units that each phase can support and that, so that each of the lender requirements can still be met, and also so that the individual phase will still be competitive for, for bonds, for the 4% low-income housing tax credits. So, as mentioned previously, we will be, of course, tracking the number of 30% units to make sure that, that we are moving forward on the commitment to make sure that there are 134 units across the site. And it's just something that we're going to have to continue to look at phase by phase as the projects move forward.
And that, and that under always another condition that we don't displace anybody right now, that we have the rent stabilization that is auxiliary to the effort to keep the line until we get the production of the units. Thanks.
Thank you. So, first, a technical question. The documents that we have before us today, the financing plan, term sheet and commitment letter, can you just describe the way in which these documents are going to be used from this, this projected presumed approval today? How are they used in the real world?
What's very interesting and what was very extraordinary about this transaction is that most affordable housing projects are scampering for all the pieces of the capital stack, whether it's the tax-exempt bonds, the low-income tax credit, and typically the gap financing. In this transaction, the gap financing was part of acquisitions, which is extraordinary, which provided the certainty for everyone that this long-term commitment could be made. There's a slew of capital providers that we'll have to talk to on every single phase. They have the boxes that they need to check. They're going to ask, do we have our gap financing? The common, the common answer, the commonplace answer is, look at what we bought. The dollars are already deployed. And so, in Alpha One, you will see the standard commitment letter that is required by some of the capital providers for the, for the LIHTC project. It is very redundant in our minds in the sense that you've already committed dollars to the project by deploying it, but yet we have to provide a commitment letter for the, for the specific phase. We do think over time, there will be opportunities for more efficiency in that, and we hope that we can continue to work with staff around that.
Thank you. And two, maybe Ms. Danowski, you can say, on the, on the county side, why are these documents important?
In regards to the affordability and the program-wide affordability and financing plan, it really sets up the framework and guidelines for how each of the loans for each of the phases will be converted from that $150 million acquisition loan to the individual loans for gap financing. And that everyone, all the parties are clear on the terms and conditions of those loans that are made for each individual phases. In terms of the financing commitment letter, that really is a requirement of Virginia Housing in order for the first renovation phase to make their bond inclusion deadline. It's a, it's a requirement essentially for, for the bonds that are necessary for the 4% low-income housing tax credits. And again, it helps outline all the terms and how the, the financing will convert, a portion of that financing will convert from the $150 million acquisition loan to the financing that's needed for that first renovation phase.
So, taken together, these exhibits are going to provide the project developer with the ability to seek other capital by understanding what is backing this commitment and the terms of which you are obligated to those backers so that they can effectively underwrite what they will provide for you. For the county, it's important to understand how as the project develops proceeds, we are going to actually get paid back on our loan. And then, there's the third party who's not in the room, who also has this money. I guess the point I'm asking, what would be the place for policy goals in the kind of documents that we're discussing? It seems to me that it's just not the right, policy goals are not the right vehicle for the tools that we have for us today. Would you concur?
I do think that you do have a master financing affordability plan. I would consider that the policy goal, the overall commitment to the committed affordable affordable housing units at the different affordability levels, the, the rent stabilization, the onsite transfers, all of that is policy. And then, there's a whole set of procedures of how do we convert this big loan into many different permanent gap financing loans? How do they line up with all the other financing that will come in for that? So, I see it as two, as policy and procedures.
Thank you. All right. Rest of the discussion is with, the discussion is still with the board, but I think we're probably ready for a motion. And it's going to be complex, so take it away, Mr. De Franti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I will move the county manager's recommendation as in the staff report from December the 12th. And there are five parts. So, the first part is to approve the attached Barcroft's, Barcroft Apartment Program-wide Affordability Housing Financing Plan and associated documents describing the site-wide affordability and financing plan for Barcroft Apartments. Second, approve the attached Barcroft Apartments' first renovation phase, Alpha One, term sheet, which outlines the financing terms and details of the first renovation plan, and the attached Arlington County Affordable Housing Financing Commitment for the rehabilitation and renovation of the Barcroft Apartments' first renovation phase, Alpha One, the Alpha One Financing Commitment Letter for the renovation and rehabilitation of the first renovation phase. Third, authorize and direct the county manager to execute on behalf of the county board the attached Alpha One Financing Commitment Letter for the renovation and rehabilitation of the first renovation phase, subject to approval as deformed by the county attorney. Fourth, authorize the county manager with the concurrence of the county attorney to act as the county board's representative in approving revisions to the attached Alpha One Term Sheet, the Alpha One Financing Commitment Letter, and the Barcroft Apartments' Program-wide Affordability Housing Financing Plan and associated documents collectively, the Barcroft financing documents that are necessary to remove any ambiguity or inconsistency or which the, or which improve the county board's financial security or financial position, and which revisions do not adversely affect the county financially prior to or after executing the Barcroft financing documents. Fifth, ratify the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's pathways to removing obstacles to housing, pro-housing grant application and associated assurances and certifications.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Karen Tonas. Mr. De Franti, would you like to begin with speaking to the motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to, I'll just combine, and this will be closing comments. This is a first that we have committed to, this is a unique and such a positive effort. And it's the first time we've committed to 10% to 30% and below units. That is a significant step. It's also the case that we are capping, through this, we are capping rent increases at no more than 3% per year. That second fact is really, really important to why I'm in support of the focusing on the 134 units. I fully hope that we can address the current concerns that Ms. Tobar asked about citizenship status. That is, to some degree, a piece of federal law that I might wish had already been changed. But we certainly, on behalf of Arlington County, I know we want that law to change, and we also want to accommodate everyone who is there at Barcroft, including those who came in today. On the budget cut point, I really do not want to see budget cuts that are, and I think it's a shared sentiment of the board, that impact our residents who are most in need, many of whom, some of whom are at Barcroft. So, those are a couple of points. Lastly, I would say, on the concept of an aspirational goal, my heart says yes. My head, in this case, can't quite get there because I see this as distinct from Langston Boulevard where that was a plan that was broader, and the finances hadn't been clearly set forth. And 99 years as opposed to 60 years, it's a significant commitment. I think that if you read pages, reread pages 14 to 16 of the staff report, ultimately, while I empathize with the speakers, I can't quite get there to saying that they changed my thinking that was in pages 14 to 16. Thank you for the chance to offer concluding comments. This is historic.
Thank you. So, I'll take the mantle next, while you all are waiting to decide. I'll support the motion, and I support the motion which does not seek to amend any of these financing documents to include aspirational language on units or otherwise for the following reasons. You know, first, it's just, it's, in my opinion, it's not, it's not the place. And the, the actual document itself in the project betterments section, while it doesn't provide a contractual way to cascade any additional resources that are brought to the project, it clearly explains that should there be other sources beyond the lending sources that are brought to bear, that there are a number of areas that we would look to include and improve upon the project's goals, and deepening affordability is one of them. And, you know, I'd also like to say that from my own personal point of view, while I completely associate myself with the spirit of some of the advocacy to make sure that in addition to existing tenants, that long-term, we create a place for people who, who are income constrained. I actually have a larger aspiration for the future, and that is that the number of 30% AMI earners shrinks. It is an artifact of the way our system works, that we have so many people who are in this position despite working and providing much value to our community. And it's not acceptable that people should be in that circumstance. So, while I understand the advocacy position, know exactly where it's coming from, I want to also put out there that our long-term aspiration should be that people can become more income-secure and not reliant on trying to find solutions like this. That said, I do still want to center our conversation a little bit from abundance and. That said, I do still want to center our conversation a little bit from abundance instead of deficit. And I appreciate Mr. Harrell's speaking at the very beginning. There are a few different ways that this could have gone in 2021. County could have just very easily taken a pass, in which case, 1,300 households would probably be coming to this room with a very, very different ask, and that is, what are you going to do, even though we know you can do nothing, to prevent this market rate owner from kicking us out of our homes and kicking us out of Arlington? That's a very real possibility. I'm not being hyperbolic. That could have happened, and it would have happened. And so I'm glad that we were able to have partners come together to make sure that that didn't happen. And that is not in any way to suggest that people who want to see something different shouldn't be critical and shouldn't voice that, but I just want to make sure we're all centered from a place of abundance and not a deficit. And when it comes to the abundance, there are some very good things here. Ms. Garvey, thank you for discussing the anti-displacement policies. I will tell you that these are among the most effective that I've ever seen, having been involved in assessing other communities, which sometimes put out, yeah, we have an anti-displacement policy, and then through either benign or active neglect, just get everybody to voluntarily leave so that they can do what they want. What we have here is something very different. Not only the one-year rent stabilization, the long-term commitment, that regardless of how things are developed, if you are of the status of being a legacy tenant, you are guaranteed a home. And then the rent escalation, it's just, it's complete, and you don't often see that in this space. So I very much thank Jirellin's Real Estate Partners for being thoughtful about it. And also from a place of abundance, we're also talking about the 10% floor of units at 30% AMI. Just for context setting, this is basically going to double over build-out, I think, where we have the number of 30% units we've produced over the last five years. So again, from a place of abundance, we are stepping up in a substantial way here, and I think that's a beautiful thing. And for the people who live at Barcroft, ultimately renovated units, modernized units, safer units, units with washers and dryers, I've, my daughter's got friends who live at Barcroft, and I've hung out in some of the first-floor basement laundry rooms, and I know that the families are going to love having the ability not to brave the elements when they are going to do their laundry. So, you know, there are so many good things that are happening here, and, you know, the areas where I think people want improvement are absolutely doable, because the partners involved are committed to making this not only a good experience, I'm sorry, not only a financially viable experience, but a good experience. And I think the proof of that was in your PowerPoint presentation, where you didn't refer to these as units, apartments, you referred to them as homes. And so I think that this is incredibly important. But I do have one area where I would like to push, and it's not you all, it's actually Mr. Schwartz. So as we, if the board goes ahead and approves all of this today, I assume moving forward, there's going to be the desire to have things kind of happen predictably and with deliberate speed moving forward. How are we equipped staff-wise to go from this point today to all of the other subsequent steps over time to make sure that we don't lose any opportunities to get financing or to create extra revenue so that we can do more project betterments and everything else?
Well, you've given me the opportunity to do something that I seldom do, which is, I know Anne Venetia and Melissa Danowski are here, which I've committed to them, that they'll have the staff they need to move this along at the pace that is appropriate. Now Melissa's heading up the team, and she's done a great job, it's an interdepartmental team, but I'm giving her permission in public to come to me and ask her more. She needs it.
And you have made Melissa smile in a way that I've never seen Melissa smile before.
This is true, and I've been watching you for a number of years.
But certainly, heading the interdepartmental team, and a lot of this is going to be, you know, our planning department, planning division, as it relates to Columbia Pike land use strategies and review and everything else. But it's great to hear that we are committed to making sure that we don't become the reason why we're not able to see this project live up to its full potential in every way. So we'll look forward to that. I can't remember where I started last time, so Vice Chair Garvey, I know I haven't started with you yet.
You have not, so that's not, that works, that works. I'm so glad you brought up the talking from a place of abundance. I was reading something recently, basically, on why are progressives so bad at getting people to come on board and, you know, look to the future, and partially because we're so bad at showing our vision for the future and how good it could be. And you sort of see that, we're always trying to make things better, which is great, and this is an incredible project. We're doing so much well, and yet we have a tendency sometimes to just criticize and try to make it better, and why can't you do this, and why can't you do that? When in fact, it's incredible what we're doing. And I understand concerns. I think over time, what you're going to be doing and what we all should be doing is building trust. And I can certainly understand people who, you know, are feeling tenuous and just going on trust, it makes them uncomfortable, and so obviously, they want to verify, they want to know about things in writing and things like that. But I think this is something we can really make a model and show the country that you can do this. We can provide good homes for people that don't have a high income. We totally can do it, and we're going to do it here, and we need to make sure that we get the good news out there, because this is something that can inspire people to, oh, maybe we could do that, and it would make this country a much better place. So thank you for being part of that. I hadn't even thought about that until you started talking about abundance. Two little things for following up, and I really appreciate getting the information on why people are leaving, what the reasons are, and I would love to kind of get, we get regular reports in case people don't know, and that's really a fascinating one, so I would be interested in kind of keeping touch with why is it people are leaving, because that kind of helps set what the narrative is. Sometimes the narrative is something else. No, no, this is what's happening. And then to Ms. Tolento's question, I don't know if it's possible, but just knowing the languages that people speak in the development might be helpful, but you all probably have a good idea. I mean, I'll never forget when I was at one point on the school board, we had more languages spoken in our school system than the United Nations. It was amazing. And we need to keep sight of that, because it's a challenge and it's a gift. It's really amazing. So I am going to support this. Appreciate all the discussion here at the table. We're going to be together talking for a long time. I think we are all on the same track. We've got people who are going to keep us on track, because if we stray, they'll get after us. But I think we're going to continue doing the right thing, building trust, and really creating a model for this country. Thank you. And thanks to staff. It's incredible. I'm glad we made Melissa happy today.
Thank you. Ms. Tolento.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. I do want to, I'm sorry, I have to pull up some language that I put together, because I want to be very clear. So I just want to start off with the fact that I will be abstaining from the ratification of the HUD application due to my role with Senator Warner's state office. I want to make sure that there's no perceived conflict of interest, but I will be exercising my vote on all the other items noted. I think it's the first four items. I just want to make, clear that up right up front.
So Board Member Tolento, since I think it's important to have your vote on the elements that you are interested in voting on, preserved, I think, parlementarily, we probably want to, you know, do something that nobody else in the world will care about, but fellow parliamentary geeks, and sever that item from the rest. And so I would accept a motion from you, not necessarily now, if you have other things that you want to say, but to separately consider that item from the rest.
Why don't we just get the clerical needs out of the question?
Okay, all right.
So I move to sever item five from the staff's presentation for action, to separate it from the standing motion, so that I can vote on that separately.
Second.
All right. So moved by Ms. Tolento, seconded by Vice Chair Garvey. Is that sufficient, Ms. Cor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So all those in favor on consideration of the, of the HUD item, is there any other discussion on that? I think it's pretty clear, straightforward. All those in favor of Ms. Tolento's motion to sever the HUD item from the main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries 5-0. So we will now continue with the conversation. Actually, sorry. We'll now move to a vote on item, on that, nah, you know, how can I do this?
We can do that at the end.
So we severed it, now we're going to have to vote on it.
Now we have two motions at the table.
Yeah, so we'll take the one that we just did, and we'll take that first. So we now have a consideration of the fifth item here, the HUD financing. Does anybody want to speak to that? None, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of that item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you. By a vote of four to zero, one abstention, that is approved, and the main motion is now items one through four. We can continue with the discussion. Ms. Tolento.
Thank you so much, Chair Dorsey, I appreciate that. First, I want to thank again Jirellin and Amazon for working, I didn't think Amazon the first time, but for working with the county in a three-way partnership to move this project forward and preserve affordability at the Barcroft Apartments. I will just support my colleagues' comments on that. I won't repeat them, but I think that it is imperative to recognize that without this project, we would have very different conversations today. Second, I want to thank the advocates, all the organizations that have come together to advocate for deepened affordability. I have a deep appreciation for that request and understand why we're seeking that. But I have to agree with many of the comments that have been shared, that I do not believe this is a place where we can do that in a sustainable and fiscally responsible way. I recognize that there's been some advocacy about the whole development, which is why I asked for my first question. The commitment to affordability for the 1,335 units is for 99 years. There is no commitment to how the rest of that development will look, as far as from a place of covenancy, being permanently under one ownership, staying as a mixed-use development. We can see today, just from one event that happens about every hundred years, how that can change. And then we've seen through different times of recession, how markets and behavior changes with how we work, or how we live, or how we play, that always impacts our commercial and private buildings. And so while the additional, I think it's the total 255 units that are being requested are based on the whole property as a whole, and averaging the income from all of the additional market rate units that will be made, those are not guaranteed. And when we look at other affordable, committed affordable properties that exist here in Arlington, that are not able to maintain a good quality of maintenance for their buildings, I just cannot, in good mind, sit here and say, let's deepen affordability and we'll figure it out later. I just can't do it. I'm fighting for other communities who are living in conditions that aren't acceptable, and that's not happening just here, it's happening in other localities. So how can we responsibly commit this affordable community in a way that we can sustain it for 100 years? The other piece is that if there are any savings, if you've read the documents, they have, I'm terrible with acronyms, I think it's called the PAF, but it's, I get it, it's a reserve account to address any changes. So if you've done any financial planning, contingencies are so important, this financial plan is so tight, that that will support if anything goes astray, if interest rates rise, if anything happens. But if the market gets better, we get those savings. And over time, those savings will return back to the county. And so then we can pay down our loans, and we can invest in affordable housing in other places in the county that also need deepened affordable housing. We just had this conversation about Langston Boulevard. There is no money right now to invest, the way that we are investing in Barcroft on Langston Boulevard. And so how can we take what we have with Langston Boulevard, and anything that could come from that, find ways to invest it in other parts of our community, to then make sure that socioeconomic diversity is everywhere in Arlington, and not concentrated in parts of our community? And that brings me back to market rate affordables, which, as you know, I've been a champion for them, because having changed income class in my life, without market rate affordable units, you are making decisions of, do I give up my job so that I can qualify for a place to live? Or do I figure out how to live an hour and away from my job and change my children's schools so I can afford a place? Or do I give up, all these other things you have to consider to find a way to live affordably when you're in between those income classes? So again, this brings back to my first point about the other market rate community, mixed-use community that Jirellin is planning to build. In 50 years, that could be a market rate affordable community. And if we depend on that community to subsidize the deepened affordability, we have now hurt income, what I call income jumping, socioeconomic income jumping. So I will not be looking to amend the language. I appreciate the advocacy, because I think it's necessary. But market rate affordability also opens doors for people who may not qualify because of lack of documentation to live in committed affordable units. So I want to thank Jirellin for guaranteeing no displacement. Unfortunately, it sounds like if we have any families who cannot produce that documentation, we're going to have to figure out ways, maybe as a community, to find other places, but we know we're losing our market rate affordability. So as advocates continue, I hope that you will advocate for renovation of market rate affordable communities, and not necessarily always look to convert them to CAFs. We need a little bit of everything. Again, just a big thank you. I have not seen a developer who invests like this. Most of our developers develop, and if we're lucky, we get 10 units onsite or a small donation. You are providing us 1,335 committed affordable units and building more housing on top of that. So, and providing, as Christian, as our Chair Dorsey said, a very clear and written-out plan for maintaining our residents there long-term and ensuring that they have rent stabilization. So thank you for your work, your investment in our community, and your vision for how to make our community inclusive. Thank you, Chair Dorsey.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, it's a very specific feeling, because this is my neighborhood. I actually was at an Barcroft at some point, and the only thing I can agree with Ms. Clement, who spoke today, is that, yes, the previous owner was a slumlord by our standards here. The entire discussion that we are having today is just indicative that what kind of an inflection point in housing we are in Arlington. It sounds a little bit like a cliche, but it's really the daily experience of tens of thousands for Arlingtonian, and existential question for my neighbors and the Barcroft Apartments, and whatever is the reminder of market rate affordable, previously called market rate affordable housing. This is not only about affordability, so economic affordability, it's about housing security, like food security, like health security, like education. These are fundamental components. Mr. Dorsey said wisely, income security, in addition to that, these are the fundamental components of belonging to our community. And, you know, it's also chance cliche, but, you know, behind numbers are always people. And Ms. Forderbruche, I really appreciate that you remind everybody, not only us, that this is the truth. And often, numbers may be doing a little bit better than people do. So the Barcroft acquisition, two years ago, this decision came before us, was a historic moment for Arlington. We invested, and I remember Mr. Diferenti was chair, but then in that December, and I want to really explicitly remind everybody of the role that Chair Dorsey and Vice Chair Garvey had, and Katie Crystal, who was on the board back then, and the entire community, and specifically the extremely hard-working people in Anne Venetia's and Ms. Tonofsky's department. We really appreciate the marathon over two years to get us to this point. This was, in orders of magnitude, the equivalent of the at least 12 years of AHEF investments in one decision. And I am really proud of where we've gotten with that. Now, housing is not a charity for, in case somebody, you know, has not a very clear understanding. Housing grants that we mentioned today, and the many ways we provide individual needs-based funding to bridge gaps, are not a substitute for long-term investment, and they are not a substitute for addressing the kind of needs that we heard from people here that are living... that we heard from people here that are really collective and long-term. They're not only, they affect the entire community, they're not only the individual households in the hardship in a moment of time. And what we are going to accomplish today is to provide a moment of stability, at least for what we can afford today. And by doing that, we are creating the base for what we can do in the next phase, when we take the next decision. The critical question here is not what we could do or what could be more fitted into this deal today, but what is the additional effort? And we need to be with Arlington. It's very clear that an additional effort is absolutely necessary to make, in order, make in addition to what we do today in the coming years to accomplish what we are saying that we want to accomplish, that is not to displace our neighbors. So I thank you so much for this work, Mr. Lynch. That was, I understand that you're part of this marathon running team and in the years ahead of us. And also, one thing, deep affordability is really about diversity. In Columbia Pike, we set out to actually overcome the place, to be a place where, you know, only low or moderate income people can live. We set out, and everything we did was about to live together in income, diversity, racial diversity, cultural diversity. So achieving the affordability, the deep affordability goals, and the moderate and low-income affordability goals is a component of that. So if you are successful, and we want to make this happen so that you are successful in this, we know that we are achieving these other goals as well. But for that, we need to be also innovative and forward-thinking when it comes to the land use decisions that will come up. And I know that we have a lot of resources that go beyond the dollars that we can commit, that we still have to work on. So the marathon is ongoing. Nobody said that this is going to be an easy climb. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other lights. So I think we're ready to move to a vote on the remaining portions of the motion, which are items, I think they were one through four, right, Mr. Diferenti? So all those in favor of items one through four associated with Barcroft, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it, five-zero. Congratulations, everyone, and we look forward to 10 years of making magic happen down at Barcroft. Thank you all. All right. We're now ready to move to our next item on the agenda. Would you please call that?
The next item is item 44. This is an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodeify Chapter 26 of the Code of Arlington County regarding the creation of a stormwater utility, the repeal of the sanitary district tax, and to adopt a resolution regarding stormwater fee relief.
Mr. Schwartz, do you have a staff presentation?
I do, Mr. Chair. Joining us in, right up front here is Tyler Smith, who is joined by Steve Skorin and Mike Moon, potential backup singer if needed. So over to you, Tyler.
Thank you. Give me one second to set up here. All right. So hello, my name is Tyler Smith. I'm the Finance and Budget Division Chief of the Environmental, Department of Environmental Services. And with me today is Stephen Skarwan, who is our new stormwater utility billing manager. With us virtually also is Krista Abel, our stormwater funds manager, Demetri McBride, the Bureau Chief of Office of Sustainability and Environment Management, and Eileen Winquist, Stormwater Communication Manager. So I'm gonna give a brief presentation today on the stormwater utility ordinance and the repeal of the sanitary district tax. The next few slides we have shared before, but we wanted to touch on them very briefly as a refresher, especially for those listening in for the first time. The county is in the process of implementing a stormwater utility as a funding mechanism to pay for the county's stormwater management program. Instead of funding the program through the sanitary district tax add-on, which is the current model and based on a property's assessed value, the program will be funded based on each property's measured impervious area. It is an alternative way to fund the program. This slide illustrates what we mean by impervious area. It's the portion of property that is covered with hard surfaces that doesn't let rain runoff soak into the ground. So the roof, patio, and walkways are all examples and shown in yellow in this illustration. So why are we transitioning to the stormwater utility? This slide goes through some of the benefits of funding the program through this model. Fees are set based on the demand each property places on the system, measured by impervious area. Ultimately, this creates a fair distribution of the costs of the program. This funding model is also in alignment with industry trends, with many Virginia jurisdictions billing their programs under a utility, including Alexandria and the city of Falls Church. The rate structure is not designed to be an incentive program, but as a cost recovery mechanism based on runoff contributed by each parcel. This results in a fair way to distribute the costs. This slide goes through the history of the project, dating all the way back to 2020, when we first undertook a stormwater utility feasibility study. The completion of that study led to county board guidance to provide fee structure options and a work session with the county board. In December 2022, we received additional guidance from the board to come back with a stormwater utility proposal as part of the FY '24 budget, but delay implementation until FY '25. We had an additional work session in January of this year, where we recommended a credit program and fee structure to the board that led the board to adopt the credit program in April. In April, the board also passed a resolution on its intent to adopt the utility fee ordinance and fee structure for calendar year '24. This slide shows the key dates related to the new stormwater utility fee. Before I go through them, behind the scenes, there has been an immense amount of work to get to this point, to build our account management system, what we call SAMs. SAMs was configured based on our recommended billing structure and approved credit program. We have completed our first round of end-to-end testing with the treasurer and are prepared to meet the deadlines laid out on this slide. So going into the details, our stormwater credit application period opened up on November 1, which was very exciting for our program. The credit application period is currently open for calendar year 2024 bills, and it is open until January 15. Today, we are here to recommend adopting the new utility ordinances and eliminating the sanitary district tax in advance of the start of the new calendar year. The stormwater utility fee is billed as a line item on each property's real estate tax bill. The first bill for calendar year 2024 will go out to property owners in May and will be due on June 15. The second bill will be due October 5. Adopting the new fee and ordinance prior to calendar year 2024 is important this year, but subsequently, we will be able to bring forward our rate recommendation as part of the annual budget process. Here's a quick overview of the board report. We are establishing a stormwater utility through Chapter 26, Article 3, as of January 1, 2024. This defines all of the customer classes, sets the utility fee, the calculations, billing and penalty policies, and the dispute process. We're also repealing the sanitary district tax as of December 31, 2023, currently Section 26-13. Also included is a resolution to provide senior disabled veterans and surviving spouse fee relief. Here's a quick recap of each section of the code proposed for reference. This slide shows the recommended fee structure for the utility. We have three customer classes: single-family, multifamily, and non-residential. All property classes will be billed on a billing unit called an equivalent residential unit, or ERU. Each ERU is recommended to be set at a fee of $258 for calendar year '24. So to go through the structure in a little bit more detail, first, for single-family, we are proposing a tiered rate structure. In this structure, single-family attached, typically what you would think of as townhomes, will be charged a flat rate of .6 ERU, the same as our smallest tier for single-family detached homes. Single-family detached properties are placed into tiers based on their measured impervious area, with most homes build one ERU. Homes with less impervious area will be built slightly less at .6 ERU, and homes between 3,600 and 4,800 square feet of impervious area will be built at 1.7 ERU. And homes with a very large amount of impervious area that are quite dissimilar from other homes in the county will be built like non-residential properties, using the exact measured area of impervious area on their property. Billing our single-family detached with, in a tiered structure, allows us to ease the administrative burden while also promoting fairness within the customer class. This is our largest property class. 68% of single-family detached homes will see their bills go up because of the amount of impervious area that single-family detached have. Most will be charged just one ERU, or the $258. It's an average increase of approximately $122. The middle column shows the multifamily customer class, where a property would be charged a flat rate of .18 ERU for each unit on their parcel. On the non-residential side, which includes commercial real estate and other non-residential properties, such as places of worship, we would bill each property based on the measured square footage of impervious area. Since each property's characteristics are so unique in the non-residential space, it is harder to create tiers with fees assigned. Therefore, we would charge based on impervious characteristics unique to each property. Our calendar year 2024 rate recommendation, as I mentioned previously, is $258 per ERU. This slide provides some more detail behind this recommendation. We thought it might be helpful to show how the burden shifts as we move from a tax assessments to impervious area. Based on calendar year 2023 assessments, median home price was $798,500 for the typical homeowner, resulting in a sanitary district tax of $136. To fund this same level of budget, the stormwater fee would be $233 per equivalent residential unit. So the one-time burden shift for a typical single-family homeowner is $97 when we change the funding mechanism to the utility. Again, this burden shift for single-family detached is due to the amount of impervious area on these property types. So $233 is a starting point for the calendar year '24 rate. From there, the rate increases due to various increases to fund the projected '25 budget. We have listed ranges on this slide, since we have not yet received county board budget guidance, and the budget is still being formulated. These added amounts are just for the increases above the '24 budget. You'll see we've included a contingency, which helps to mitigate any uncertainty of this early rate adoption. You'll also see the majority of the increases due to the capital program, both the transfers to Pago and the increase in debt service. These increases are necessary to fund the county board's adopted CIP plan for stormwater, with the increases mainly driven by necessary improvements to our capital infrastructure. Next slide. Here is a jurisdictional comparison for the FY '24 adopted budget, where we have layered on the rate increase for Arlington due to the change from the sanitary district tax to the utility on the green line. As noted earlier, the typical single-family home will see an increase of 100, on average of $122, with the majority of that, or $97, due to the burden shift. Next slide. This slide shows burden shifting between customer classes, going from the tax, the left pie chart, to the estimated stormwater fee, the right pie chart. You can see the shift in burden between customer classes. And again, this is driven by the amount of impervious area attributable to each class. The previous stormwater tax was based on property assessments, which has no correlation to impervious area or runoff produced by properties. Overall, single-family detached goes up from 36% to 43%. Single-family attached goes down slightly by 1%. Non-residential goes up from 23% to 31%. This is largely driven by strip retail, because of their more horizontal footprints, and other properties like the federal government, nonprofits, and places of worship, who haven't had to pay for stormwater previously. Multifamily as a whole goes down, but within that customer class, more sprawling types of properties, like garden-style apartments, will see their burden go up. This slide shows the adopted credit that the county board adopted in April. The credit program application period opened up on November 1 and goes through January 15. The online application is available through the county's reporter problem tool on the county website. As of the beginning of last week, we had approved 70 applications for voluntary credits. Actions completed in calendar year '23 are eligible to receive credit on their calendar year '24 bills due next June 15 and October 5. Also included in the ordinance is the dispute and appeal process. This will also be handled through the report a tool, problem tool, on the county's website. The dispute process is only available for the 45 days surrounding the bill issuance, and disputing a bill does not mean you can delay paying or not pay your bill. There are five reasons why a property owner can dispute their bill, which are listed here on this slide, and disputes will be handled by our utility billing manager. If you don't agree with the result of a dispute, there are two reasons why we will allow property owners to then appeal that decision for either an error of their impervious area calculation or an error on customer class. Those appeals will be handled by myself. To coincide with the adoption of the stormwater utility fee will be the repeal of the sanitary district tax. The new utility fee replaces the current sanitary district tax as the funding mechanism for the stormwater program. This will be repealed, and essentially, the rate will be set to zero as of December 31, 2023, and the new utility rate takes effect on January 1. An additional item listed in the board report is a resolution for stormwater fee relief. This resolution is to provide fee relief for senior and disabled residential property owners and disabled veteran and surviving spouses that are also eligible for real estate tax exemptions and deferrals. This program leverages existing verification processes already in place that DHS and DRAA manage, so no additional overhead or new verification process is required. The general fund provides the grant funding for this program. Next slide. This project has been ongoing since 2020 and has included robust public engagement, from bringing together a stakeholder advisory group to public information sessions, open houses, survey, mailers to households. We have completed comprehensive public engagement and a communication effort. 2023 outreach has been more focused on providing information to the public on what to expect in calendar year 2024, both for billing and the credit program. In 2023, we have hosted six information sessions, sent direct mailers to all property owners, published fact sheets, videos, and a credit manual. We've also shared ongoing updates through a newsletter, social media, and our website. And we'll continue these efforts in anticipation of our first bill going out in May. With that, I'm taking a question.
Thank you very much. And I don't believe we have any advisory groups joining us today to speak on this matter. All right, so do we have any public speakers, Mr. Barrera?
Yes, we have one public speaker. Her name is Teresa Flynn.
Do you have the lights on? Good morning. My name is Teresa Flynn. I am a lifelong resident of South Arlington.
Columbia Forest.
I am here to speak against the proposed new stormwater tax. What this board has done is exchange a tax on the rich for a tax on the poor. Let me explain. Two years ago, you restructured the water payment system so that those of us who water our lawns a lot in the summer are not paying as much on water bills. This change helped the rich, because those with means tend to have larger properties and more extensive lawns than the poor. Then, less than a year later, you proposed a stormwater tax. The exemptions are for things like planting trees and maintaining gardens and installing large water maintenance systems. The poor do not have money to install large water maintenance systems. They do not have the room to place a 150-foot garden and plant new trees on their property, much less maintain them, which takes, you guessed it, a lot of water. Not to mention that the guidebook to obtain an exemption is some 40 pages of arcane language, which would make the IRS proud. Yes, you translated it into Spanish, but not to one of the dozens of other languages spoken by the people who live here. As a college-educated native speaker of English, I struggled with it. The application process is cumbersome, at the very least, and took me months. And many of the rules for exemptions simply make no sense. I have nine trees on my property, but they don't count. Only newly planted trees do, and I don't have any more room. My neighbor put in a massive and expensive French drain system a few years ago, but that doesn't count because it was pre-existing and he no longer has records of the work. My entire property, and that of many of my neighbors, slopes back from the street, meaning less than 10% of the rain which falls on my land actually makes it to the storm drains, but that also does not matter. I had difficulty obtaining an exemption because the application period is in the winter, when gardens are when gardens are dormant, so photos show little of what you're trying to prove that you actually have. The definition of rain garden you provide, by the way, is limited and incorrect according to the Environmental Protection Agency website. This entire project is, in my opinion, ill-conceived and badly implemented. You're going to pass it, of course, because you already opened up the process for exemptions. But I do ask two things for the board. Number one, look at the data in February to see who applied for and who actually received exemptions. And number two, if you insist on sticking with this boondoggle of a tax next year, make the exemptions be based on household income. That, at least, is fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Does that conclude?
That does conclude our public speakers.
Okay, the discussion is now with the board. This is an interesting item. It is before us today for action, and we do have a hearing on it, but it is not the first time our public has heard about it. So Mr. Karen Tonas, why don't you at least put a motion on the floor to focus our conversation?
I will get a straight Asian to chair so that the conversation, the discussion can happen. I would like to move the county manager's recommendation in three pieces. First, adopt the amendment to Chapter 26 of the Arlington County Code to enact a new stormwater utility, set the annual stormwater utility rate at the proposed $258 per equivalent residential unit ERU, define the utility fee structure, and codify policies effective January 1st, 2024, as in Amendment 1 to this staff report. Second, to repeal Section 26-13 of the Arlington County Code to eliminate the sanitary district tax effective December 31st, 2023, Attachment 2. And third, adopt a resolution establishing a stormwater fee relief program for senior and disabled residential property owners and disabled veterans and surviving spouses that currently qualified for real estate, tax exemptions, and deferrals. That's Attachment 3. And that concludes the motion.
Thank you, and I'll second that. Would you like to speak anymore to your motion?
I will try to be as succinct as possible since we will have a conversation. I really remember when I was running for office the first time in May 2020, when the Stormwater feasibility study dropped, and you can imagine that how big of a deal this was for somebody who was running an environmental agenda and was confronted daily with questions about the stormwater management, especially after the devastating events of the summer of 2019. So given the climate crisis in first place and the urban growth in second place, we significantly changed the order of magnitude of needed investment stormwater management. And the study was, you know, posing the right policy questions at its point. So how are we going to distribute the cost burden of anchor residents? How can we incentivize impact mitigating behavior, good behavior? How are we going to account for financial impact and affordability to customer groups that vastly vary in their capacity to carry a collective burden? We heard testimony for this today. What is the right structure to fund current needs and be prepared to scale and adapt for future challenges? And then, how are we going to administer that in a structure that is practical, fair, equitable, and transparent, so that it can be also fixed and polished as we go? So after three years, and I commend you for this, we recognize that the regressive sanitary district tax is neither fair nor equitable nor adequate to address the environmental and financial challenge of stormwater management in our county. We establish a stormwater utility with this motion that indeed apportions the burden based on the impact generated by each customer or customer class based on impervious cover of each parcel. We establish a unit to measure, the ERU. We establish a fee structure that responds to the need for fair but equitable distribution of the burden, while it reflects our particular local customer class mosaic and balances the individual ability to carry the burden with upholding the principle of paying proportional to impact. And we enable the utility to implement a credit program that incentivizes impact mitigating and therefore right and beneficial for all behavior. And finally, we made this program as easy and as transparent as possible in its administration. And I should highlight transparency because it's the very fact that this utility is showing what the real order of magnitude of facing this significant challenge of stormwater management actually costs and, you know, makes it very, very clear. When I was, three years ago, when I was running for office, the cost for, in a 10-year CIP was about $190 million. Today is more, as manager corrects, is more than $300, $300 million. So that shows alone the reasons for which we proposed this utility, the establishment of this utility today. So that's my spiel, and I hope we can have a good conversation there.
Thank you. Want to go back to this side? Mr. De Feranti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am happy to support this. I think it's an important step forward. To Ms. Flynn's comments, I do think implementation and data will be very, very important. There's, and I will have some follow-up questions that I want to talk with our county attorney about eventually regarding a question I got about easements and how the mechanics would work. But the broad argument made that this is, this is not the right policy, I differ on because impervious surfaces should, in my view, be the measure by which we are assessing this. And, you know, I don't think that the property tax alone is the right way to address this concern. So that's just sort of a brief, my answer to the, to the one comment we've had today. I'm sure there will be more comments as we implement this in the coming months. I have no doubt about that. And implementation will be key. Persistence and detail will be key, and I'm glad that this, this sort of clarity of who's going to be considering appeals, that's a good example of the level of detail that I think that the entire team will need, but happy to support. Thank you. And I might add, thank you for the work. It's not an insignificant amount of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Tolento.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. And I want to just know that I will be supporting this motion. I have shared a little bit of some of the questions and concerns I'd had with staff, and I'll just echo a little bit of that today. As, I agree with Mr. De Feranti and our speaker today that we really should look at data and understand who's applied for the exemptions, and in that same vein, consider barriers to exemption application, but also understanding that many of our homes are set up differently throughout Arlington. I did have a question about grandfathering, but I think Ms. Flynn answered it. I, have us look at that again for some of the smaller lots or lots that are actually more affordable overall in Arlington. Most of them already come with a lot of impervious surface in existence in some of our, especially in some of our more diverse neighborhoods. And so, you know, I think there's a good point in saying, if they already have rain barrels in there, but they're not qualified because they're grandfathered in, you know, how do we address those, some of what might be perceived as inequities? I think they're inequities when we're looking long-term at what you can do, what your financial capacity is to do. And talked a little bit about rain gardens and are there, so I would ask that you look at other options that a homeowner who may not have the land for a rain garden could do to get the 35% credit that a rain garden provides. And so just thinking about those things, I think the first time you do anything, you're just not, it's just impossible to get it perfect. There's so much work getting into a foundation of any policy or project. So first and foremost, thank you for where we got today. You know, understanding that we do have to address our stormwater needs, recognizing that we have to be very intentional about what that means, and trying to incentivize our community to think about how they're creating homes and how they're preserving our ability to manage stormwater. So thank you for that. Please do not take it as a criticism, just as a place for growth in how we can really make sure that as we're moving forward this tax. We are thinking about everybody that it impacts and providing opportunities for everybody to have a chance to get the exemption, especially considering some of the limitations that many of our neighbors and community members will have. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll give Ms. Garvey the last words, and so I'll just interject to say that, you know, I'm going to support this. We've been talking about this in the community for a long time, socializing it with a lot of key interest groups. Is it a perfect thing? No, but I certainly think it's a better standard than where we are right now, whereas Ms. Smith noted, we have really no nexus between the way we charge people for this now and the way they actually cause an impact. And, you know, when you talk about principles of equity, fairness, justice, or whatever, I would think having a nexus between collecting a fee and what you use it for is a pretty big element of that. So I see this as a step forward. And then when we considered that what we were collecting was not sufficient for what we were spending, bringing to it other funding sources in order to make it happen, or deferring, doing the work in the first place, those were not acceptable. So this begins to rebalance, re-center, and provide an opportunity for us to do it right when it comes to stormwater and, and climate resiliency. And as to the, you know, the, the issues with the credit program, I actually don't like the credit program, but it's not our choice. We have to do it. And I think is, is being required to do it. We're, we're doing it as fairly as we reasonably can, but I think the more you start thinking about credit programs, it, it conveys that there is a degree of specificity, that you're doing things that measurably reduce your impact, and it's speculative, and it's a little too, too wishy-washy for me, and I, I just wish we didn't do it in the first place. But again, that's not a choice that, that we had before us with this, so I'm glad to support it. Ms. Garvey.
Thank you. I'm going to support this too for everything, all reasons. I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues have said. I'd actually like to ask Ms. Smith if she has any comment she'd like to make, having heard all of these concerns about equity. If there's anything you would like to add at the moment, you don't have to, but there might be some thoughts going through your head about what might be usefully, as a response to the equity concerns we've heard.
Well, of course, you know, as a first year in any program, we're collecting data, and we're going to go back and see what can we do better. And Steve, as our new utility billing manager, has been taking a lot of, taking time with every inquiry we get to explain the process, but all that information and the trouble that people are having with applying or reading our manual, we will, you know, take and, and see how we can improve. Just one clarifying point, there are some grandfathered-in credit program elements, including rainwater collection, rain garden, and permeable driveway, but you do have to have some documentation. We have to have an ability to verify. But I think, again, we'll look critically at how we've designed that program and if there are improvements we can make.
Great, thank you. I think we need to be prepared for June when the first bills actually go out, because then I think you'll be getting a lot of inquiries, we all will, and I look forward to responding to them. And then, you know, I think in about a year or so, get a report back on how we're doing. So thank you so much.
And actually, I lied. I apologize. Not the last word. But for the typical user who has been receiving, who's, you know, gets, gets the semi-annual tax bill, their user experience is pretty much the same, right?
Correct.
Right.
If you're paying your real estate tax through escrow, it'll continue to be done that way, and you may not even, you know, see your bill.
Right. So for a lot, I think a lot of people out there, there's going to be a whole lot of nothing. Where we're going to hear from folks are the ones who are paying for the first time, as we have heard, the, you know, exempt, previously exempted institutions and such. All right. Seeing as though there are no other comments, all those in favor of Mr. Karen Tonas's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you very much for all of the good work. And I apologize during this holiday season of gift-giving. I'm going to actually disappoint a number of people in the room. We are going to take a break because we're going to be much better attentive to you if we take a little bit of a break right now. So the board will endeavor to be back here at around 12:45, give or take a few minutes, okay? Thank you.[1452.83]
All right, we're ready to resume and apologies if it inconvenienced any of you who were here for the next item, but believe me, we will be much more attentive as a result of that break. So thank you for your grace. And are you ready to call the next item?
Yes, the next item is item 45, the adoption of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan as an element of Arlington's comprehensive plan.
All right, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Let me pull the slides up and I will get started.
Before you get into it, Mr. Delaney, can you figure out a way to position your microphone a little bit closer to your face? Thank you.
Is that better?
It is.
Great, thanks. Sorry. So I'll start with an overview of the plan and how it fits into county planning. The FNRP is a new element of the county's comprehensive plan and will serve as the guiding document for Arlington's policies for integrated natural resource and urban forest management across the county. It updates and replaces the Urban Forest Master Plan and Natural Resources Management Plan, both of which were sub-elements of the Public Spaces Master Plan and dealt primarily with public property. So for the first time, we're looking at all of our natural resources as an interconnected system that covers not only public, natural areas and parks, but the built environment and private property as well. And we're at the end of a years-long process to develop the plan. The Planning Commission unanimously voted earlier this month to recommend adoption, and we're bringing the final draft of the FNRP to you all today.
All right, we're ready to resume. And apologies if it inconvenienced any of you who were here for the next item, but believe me, we will be much more attentive as a result of that break. So thank you for your grace. And are you ready to call the next item?
Yes, the next item is item 45, the adoption of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan as an element of Arlington's comprehensive plan.
All right, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to say that after three years, I'm really excited that we're able to bring this plan forward to you. It includes an integrated approach to environmental planning and emphasizes equity in the community's role in helping us conserve natural resources. And so, you know, we are laying out a vision in this plan, and one of the things you'll note that implementing it, we get to that part, is going to be no small feat. There are about, I think, over 80 recommendations. So I wanted to take this chance to recognize the work of the EnerJAG, which now I know you all want to know what that stands for, the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group, especially Caroline Haynes and Phil Klingelhofer, who are here for their work on the plan, and then also the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, C2E2. And obviously, I want to thank the Department of Parks and Recreation. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. FNRP himself, Ryan Delaney, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Let me pull the slides up, and I will get started. Okay, great. Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Delaney. I'm a planner with the Department of Parks and Recreation and the project manager for the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan. I'm joined by our director, Jane Rudolph, and my colleagues Jennifer Fioretti, Irene Lozick, John Marlin, Alonso Abagadis, and Vincent Bertway, also of DPR. And I will be presenting a short summary of the plan and our planning process, as well as an overview of the changes made since the RTA in October, and some high-level next steps should the plan be adopted today. And I would just like to take a moment to echo the managers' thanks to the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group for their support throughout this process, and also to acknowledge our interdepartmental staff team, whose creativity and tireless effort were integral to developing the plan. And finally, the community members who put their time and energy into this process and really brought us to this point.
Before you get into it, Mr. Delaney, can you figure out a way to position your microphone a little bit closer to your face?
Is that better?
It is.
Great, thanks. Sorry. So I'll start with an overview of the plan and how it fits into county planning. The FNRP is a new element of the county's comprehensive plan and will serve as the guiding document for Arlington's policies for integrated natural resource and urban forest management across the county. It updates and replaces the Urban Forest Master Plan and Natural Resources Management Plan, both of which were sub-elements of the Public Spaces Master Plan and dealt primarily with public property. So for the first time, we're looking at all of our natural resources as an interconnected system that covers not only public, natural areas and parks, but the built environment and private property as well. And we're at the end of a years-long process to develop the plan. The Planning Commission unanimously voted earlier this month to recommend adoption, and we're bringing the final draft of the FNRP to you all today. Looking back, that process began in 2020 and has included an interdepartmental core team with members of multiple divisions from DPR, as well as our colleagues from DES, CPHD, AED, and APS. And the process has been supported by EnerJAG, as we've covered, with whom we've met regularly and with their constituent commissions as well. This process included benchmarking research to learn more about current practices, innovative programs, and lessons learned from our peer jurisdictions, including Fairfax, Albemarle, and Prince William Counties in Virginia, Montgomery County in Maryland, and the cities of Seattle, Washington, and Richmond, Virginia, amongst others. And lastly, the plan has been shaped by three rounds of public engagement, starting well before the first draft was written, that created opportunities for Arlingtonians to learn a bit more about their environment and influence how we plan for its future. Outreach methods across those three engagements included online comment forums, educational materials, bilingual pop-up events across the county, virtual public meetings, and in-person open house, as well as multiple commission and committee briefings. Overall, these outreach efforts generated over 5,000 comments that helped us shape the FNRP. And we've addressed a great many comments and made a lot of changes, significant changes to the draft throughout this process. Some of the common comments and themes we heard over the last few years were how the plan characterizes the county's tree canopy coverage and what an appropriate goal for our countywide canopy coverage would be, how equity is addressed by the plan, the importance of biophilic design for conservation purposes, how the plan will be implemented, and how intersecting programs such as deer management and our volunteer efforts are addressed in the plan. And this feedback informed not just the content of the document, but also our approach to developing it, and we're very grateful for the community's involvement along the Speaking of the planning approach, the FNRP is, as I mentioned earlier, a combined update to the Urban Forest Master Plan and Natural Resources Management Plan. We tried to go beyond simply combining these elements into a single document and develop an integrative perspective on environmental planning that emphasizes equity, a community-wide approach based in education, outreach, and volunteerism, and a focus on reconnecting nature to daily life. And to that end, the FNRP really follows from the county's Equity and Biophilic Cities resolutions and focuses on breaking down the artificial distinction between nature as something separate and over there, and the built environment where we live our daily lives, through creating more space for natural elements alongside us through biophilic design, and ensuring that the benefits of those resources are equitably available regardless of folks' backgrounds. And we believe that this approach is critical not just to the conservation of our natural resources, but also to Arlington's quality of life. And so that brings us to what's actually in the plan. Similar to other comprehensive plan elements, the FNRP includes an executive summary, a vision statement, and priority actions that summarize the plan upfront, followed by detailed discussion of planning principles, a narrative introduction, and planning context to provide some background on how this fits into Arlington's comprehensive plan. The strategic directions are the sort of main component of the plan. These are our broad policy areas that form the framework of the plan's recommendations. In each strategic direction, the plan prescribes actions that the county should take towards achieving the overarching policy goal, and each action contains action steps, the specific implementation tasks that the county can take to move the policy forward. The structure is similar to that of our Public Spaces Master Plan, and in the current draft, there are 83 individual action steps. The strategic directions are conservation, climate mitigation, adaptation, and resilience, biodiversity, and operations. And together, they cover recommendations ranging from conserving the quality and extent of our tree canopy and directing resources to climate-vulnerable hotspots, to encouraging community involvement in environmental management and reintroducing nature to our built environment through biophilic design. Out of all of these recommendations, the draft highlights 10 priority actions. These were selected to emphasize the major changes that the FNRP recommends over current policy, highlight our equity recommendations, elevate the actions staff felt would be most impactful, and reflect what we learned about community priorities through our public engagement process. And this list includes cornerstone conservation goals like reestablishing and maintaining at least 40% tree canopy countywide, while ensuring that 70% of those canopy trees are native species, acquiring land for conservation purposes, and establishing connectivity between nodes of habitat. It also includes recommendations emphasizing the FNRP's focus on creating more space for natural resources and green infrastructure in our developed areas through both local and state-level actions. And lastly, the selection highlights the plan's equity measures in both the maintenance and establishment of green infrastructure and strives to emphasize the FNRP's community-based approach to conservation through outreach and volunteerism. The emphasis on those priority actions does not mean that the other 70 action steps aren't accounted for, though. The FNRP includes a full implementation framework, similar to that of our other comprehensive plan elements, where each of the plan's recommendations is included along with high-level details about proposed timing, responsible parties and partners, planning-level cost estimates, and potential funding sources. And finally, the plan contains seven appendices that support those recommendations that we just explored and provide some additional context and background, covering the topics shown here on the slide. And moving into what we've heard since we were last here for our RTA, at this stage, we heard from relatively few individuals, mainly from county commissions and a handful of stakeholders. However, I want to highlight the summary of that feedback as a lead into discussing our last round of edits. The bullets on the slide here are the themes of that feedback, of what we've heard since the RTA. They include support for the plan and its recommendations, an increased focus on implementation funding and progress reporting, and some continued suggestions regarding a more urgent tone in the executive summary and introduction. Overall, we believe we've worked through the major issues and are very grateful to our commenters, stakeholders, and commission members who contributed to the development of the plan. And though the feedback was largely supported, we did make a small handful of changes to the draft since October that I'll describe now. The first of the two major text edits is in Strategic Direction 1. It's only indirectly related to this last round of public feedback, but it's one I think is worth celebrating. If you recall, in past versions of the plan, we had Action Step 1.2.6, which was a recommendation to review and update Chapter 10, Article 2 of the county code, to allow and encourage naturalized areas using native plantings on private and public property. And I'm happy to report that we're able to remove this from the plan and replace it with a call-out box, shown here on the right of the slide, highlighting the adoption of these code changes in September as an early win for the FNRP's goals. We've also refined Action Step 4.1.4, which covers implementation progress and reporting. In light of comments we received about implementation tracking since our meeting in October and C2E2's testimony on this subject at that meeting. So previously, we'd expanded this recommendation to report annually on implementation progress from its prior focus, reporting out specifically on tree statistics and the results of certain inventories, but the supporting text lagged behind that headline and was still really focused on those tree metrics. We updated the text to make it quite clear that our commitment is to annual reporting on implementation progress for the entirety of the plan, based on the successful model of Public Spaces Master Plan implementation reporting through the PSMP IAC. We also received quite a few comments on photos, graphics, and layout of the plan since the original format of draft was published back in June. So staff took this time during the RTA period to review and enhance some of the visual elements of the plan, cleaning up existing graphics, adding a handful of new photos that emphasized the intersections of nature and daily life, or highlight elements of our ecosystem that were referenced in the document. And we also took this time to resolve some of the layout issues and errors that folks had pointed out over the course of the process. So shown here are just a few examples of some of those new photos in the document. And I know this seems like a small change, but we wanted to really make the document as interesting and easy to read as possible so we can continue to use it as an outreach and education tool moving forward. So felt it was worth noting this afternoon. And as we move into implementation planning, I want to touch briefly on two FNRP-related processes that DPR is already working on that will help us collect some baseline data and advance the goals in the plan. The first is our deer management process, project, I should say. This process intersects with two action steps in the FNRP most directly. 3.2.6, which directs the county or recommends the county monitor and manage native species with the potential to harm ecological health and integrity, and 4.1.8, which recommends that the county conduct surveys on high-impact organisms and emerging pests to inform our environmental management. But this work will affect many of the conservation and biodiversity recommendations in the plan. So early next year, we'll be publishing the summary of the first public engagement, sharing new educational materials, and hosting virtual public meetings focused on those materials. And later in the year, we'll be sharing out recommendations for our deer management strategies and asking for the community's feedback on those strategies. Similarly, we'll begin our 2024 Tree Canopy Study, which fulfills some of our inventory recommendations in Strategic Direction 4, and provides us an updated baseline data that will inform everything from those tree canopy recommendations in Strategic Direction 1 to our equity and habitat goals in Strategic Directions 2 and 3. We've already begun data collection, and early next year, we'll be seeking bids for the analysis of that data and the development of a report to share findings. DPR will then be able to use that new analysis to inform some FNRP implementation items and other projects. So even as we begin to move into our formal implementation planning, we're ready to hit the ground running with some exciting new projects in the new year. And in terms of next steps on the FNRP broadly, should the plan be adopted today, we'll begin our implementation plan in January. One of the first details that we'll be working on is the logistics of commission oversight and reporting, and we'll be meeting with the Chair of the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group and the representatives of its constituent commissions in the new year to discuss further and finalize details. And similarly, DPR will be working both internally and with other county departments to develop a work plan based on our priority actions in the document and other intersecting action steps and reaching back out to the community as appropriate. So that brings staff's presentation to a close. I'd like to conclude by highlighting the recommendation from the county manager that the board adopt the attached resolution to adopt the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan as an element of the Arlington's comprehensive plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Delaney. And we have a number of advisory groups who are going to weigh in on this conversation. It's so good to see you all here. You can all make yourselves comfortable at the four available seats at the front, and that might not accommodate all of you, so at some point, we'll do a change. All right, so this is really remarkable. You all had no way of knowing this, but I've got an order, and it goes from Ms. Krupa all the way over to Ms. Bagley, just as you were situated. So let's call it a win. Trudy, please begin.
Thank you very much. Are we good?
Yeah, please.
Awesome. Well, thank you for having us today. This is a long time coming and a big culmination of work done by staff and volunteers. Super excited to make it to what is almost the finish line here. I'm speaking on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission today, and I will be brief with my remarks. I want to start with, the FNRP is a major undertaking. Combining the previous Urban Forestry Master Plan and the Natural Resources Management Plan into a single plan and creating a new element of the comprehensive plan provides the county and residents with a new vision and tools to support our parks, trees, and urban ecology. With the enactment of the final plan, county decisions must, for the first time, consider the importance of our urban forests and natural resource as among the 12 most important components provided by our green infrastructure. This includes both property valuation and benefits that we will be investing in, and the expansion, maintenance, and preservation of our natural capital, and budgeting in other county decisions as well. Thank you for this opportunity to provide input from the Parks and Recreation Commission. We would like to thank the dedicated staff that worked hard to develop the FNRP, and to applaud the extensive public engagement efforts that were extremely successful in exciting public comments and improving the final product. So thank you today.
Thank you, Ms. Krupa. We appreciate it. Ms. McIntyre.
Yes. Morning. Yes, also, I'm thrilled to be here on this project and this plan. I'm Joan McIntyre, speaking on behalf of the Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission. C2E2 strongly supports adopting the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan. As a component of Arlington's comprehensive plan, the FNRP offers a clear vision with strategic directions and actions that recognizes the importance of our natural resources as natural capital, critical to resilient and sustainable future for Arlington. The FNRP will bring attention to investments needed to realize the benefits of our natural capital. We greatly appreciate the staff's work to address our concerns, and with the adjustments in the language, we're satisfied with the plan in terms of setting the stage for regular reporting and measurement and progress on implementing the plan. Regular assessments on indicators such as tree canopy coverage by neighborhood, progress on reducing invasive species, improvements in water quality and diversity of flora and fauna can all be, can be used to track our investments and form Arlington's future decisions and adjustments to planned actions. County staff has worked diligently to produce the plan with extensive public engagement and responsive to the comments, and C2E2 commends them both for their substantive substance and process. I will echo in advance the priorities that Mr. Klingelhofer will be talking about next and look forward to assisting with the implementation as a guide for creating a future for Arlington that seamlessly blends the built and natural environments and all the benefits to health, climate mitigation, and adaption in natural habitat. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Klingelhofer.
Thank you very much. I'm, as you may know, I'm Phil Klingelhofer, Chair of the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission. And first, I want to start by saying that we've been actively engaged with the development of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan from the beginning of this extensive planning process. The Commission strongly supports adoption of the plan, and especially its quick and expeditious implementation. As the plan says, we do face many challenges, including rapidly declining tree canopy, threats to our critical natural resources, continued rapid redevelopment, and the need to build resiliency into the growing impact of climate change. We no longer have the luxury of taking a pause between the development of the plan and putting it into action. We need decisive action, and it needs to start now. While the Commission supports the priority objectives as designated in the plan, the Commission would like to undertake, would like to highlight what it sees as the key actions that should be undertaken immediately. One, begin the process of reexamining rules for lot coverage and setbacks by including this task in the upcoming CPHD work plan. This will better ensure that plantable spaces are available for trees and other native vegetation. Continuing to allow overbuilt lots with little or no capacity for preserving or planting canopy trees, whether for single or multiple families, is a serious problem that needs to be corrected. Two, revise the site plan process to ensure that public space, biophilic design, native plants, and other green infrastructure elements are integrated into the planning process from the very beginning. Three, move forward on a responsible deer management plan so that we can begin to regenerate our native, our tree canopy and natural areas for all our native flora and fauna. Four, complete the tree canopy study as quickly as possible to rigorously quantify tree canopy trends and to provide a clearer framework for designing and implementing strategies to maximize tree canopy and other native vegetation. That's especially important for historically underserved neighborhoods. And five, redouble efforts to lobby for and pass state legislation that would expand the policy tools available to local jurisdictions to promote conservation and management of their natural resources. The commissioners are enthusiastic in support of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan. The goals are attainable if we can turn this plan into meaningful action and fully integrate it as the 12th element in Arlington's comprehensive plan, with the necessary resources supporting its implementation. Thank you for this opportunity to share our commission's views.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bagley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Nea Bagley, representing the Planning Commission. We had more questions, actually, during the RTA than during this. Most of those things were addressed ably when it came back to us. I won't belabor the comments that you already have. We were enthusiastic and extremely supportive of your approving this. There was one other comment that is not on here that I will share, and one of the commissioners said, "Please, staff brag about your accomplishments." So thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And Ms. Haynes.
Thank you very much. I am delighted to be here today. Just for the record, Caroline Haynes, some Chair of the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group, and delighted to be here today. Group, and delighted to be here to support the adoption of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan. And I want to echo all of the comments of my fellow commissioners. We've been in this together through the long haul, and I think we've all are coming very much to consensus on this. It's been a very long, methodical, and thoughtful process, and it has resulted in a plan that really is comprehensive and integrated across the Comprehensive Plan, the other Comprehensive Plan elements, and across the county departments. And I think that's, as Nia said, this is something, Commissioner Bagley said, this is something we should be bragging about. The pressures on the long-term sustainability and resilience of our natural resources are very real and very urgent, and ensuring equal access for everyone in our community to enjoy the myriad benefits from our natural capital requires the integrated action steps included in this plan. The over 80 policy recommendations were developed and improved by the extensive public engagement process. If fully implemented, these recommendations have the potential to really benefit every corner of Arlington. I want to thank again, I know everybody said it, but I've got to do it too. I want to thank my fellow Enerdag Commission members, Phil Klingelhofer, David Howell from the Forestry and Natural Resource Commission, Shruti Kuppa, Jill Barker, and Sarah Baraluk from Park and Rec, and from C2E2, Joan McIntyre, and our newest addition, David Evans. And kudos to our wonderful staff team. It's just been a great process, and, you know, this has, it's been such a delight for us to be working with such talented, professional, and really responsive staff. So, anyway, I just, it's been a real joy, and obviously, Mr. Delaney, who has been the ringmaster in all of this, has been just great to be working with. And as I said at the Planning Commission, a lot of times, when you get to this stage of the planning process, you're done. It's like, I'm done, I'm burned out, we're all exhausted, we've been looking at this way too long, but I really feel like this one is very different. And there does feel that sense of urgency, and the magnitude of the issues that we face have created an energy and enthusiasm for adopting this and getting ready to work on this right away. Mr. Delaney mentioned that we want to hit the ground running. I think that our fellow commissioners would very much agree with that, that we want to get this implemented as quickly as possible. Just on a personal note, I regret that Chair Dorsey and Ms. Toledo will not be on the board as we work through, as we work through some of these implementation steps. I appreciate, Ms. Toledo, your willingness to step in and fill in an important role for the past several months. And Chair Dorsey, it has been an honor and a privilege to work with you over the years, the past eight years, as your leadership and dedicated service on the board, so thank you for that. And anyway, I just want to thank you both, thank all of you, for the opportunity to support this important plan.
Thanks to the five of you and to all who engaged in this conversation. And now the discussion is, actually, no, we want to see if we have any public speakers on this.
Yes, we do, and I think this is a sign of, okay. We've got two public speakers for this item. The first is Matt Gerhart for three minutes, followed by Bill Richardson, representing the Donaldson Run Civic Association for five. And Mr. Gerhart, if you wouldn't mind pressing the button just to make sure that it is on.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great.
Thanks for your patience.
Oh, of course. Thank you, Chair Dorsey, and members of the board. It's a real pleasure to be here today at the end of this process. I'm Matt Gerhart, Conservation Director for the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. We're a county partner. We've been working throughout the process with staff at DPR and other agencies to follow and sort of get the word out about the FNRP. It's a real pleasure to be here with the chance to provide comment and support of adoption today of this plan. It is a major achievement, particularly to have consolidated these different disparate elements of a comprehensive plan into one, and to have this layering of strategic objectives and strategies behind them that we think will work. I also want to say, we've appreciated the support of our Arlington Board members, our Gary Kirkbride, Phil Klingelhofer, Shruti Kuppa, throughout the process, helping keep us in touch with what's going on with the plan. And we're really excited to get things moving if you choose to approve it today. Arlington does face great challenges to its natural environment, particularly regarding climate change, forest canopy management, water quality, habitat protection, and our consistent emphasis has been on the private land side of this. We can't all be doing this with public resources on public land. So NVCT has been really focused on how can we implement new and innovative strategies working with the citizens in the county. We've followed this throughout the region, we do on a daily basis, and I'll even say this week, there have been public processes in the greater Northern Virginia zone that have, would, that this, that pale in comparison to what you all have accomplished here in terms of public process, engagement, and a true dialogue with your citizens on what they want to see. We hear weekly from landowners on the issues that are confronting them, and much is being lost, but we do believe that, and I even know of particular properties that we have worked on in the county that I believe directly will benefit from the changes you would adopt today. As an example, we've succeeded in conserving and helping work with the county on over an acre and a third of new open space, working with a private landowner just this past year. That's the kind of success we see in the future as we move along in this process, but I do want to emphasize that it won't all be donations at private largess. There will be real programmatic investments that are needed at the county level and in partnership with private sources to make these goals real. At NVCT, we're committed, our restoration, our management effort, and our partnership with the county will continue, and we include our, we appreciate our inclusion in many of these strategies and look forward to working with the county moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Bill Richardson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Donaldson Run has filed extensive comments on two prior versions of this draft plan, first in September last year and June of this year. We endorse the plan's focus on preservation of the dwindling tree canopy in Arlington, but we share what the staff report concedes or concerns regarding the level of urgency in the plan's tone and how ambitious the plan's recommendations are regarding tree canopy coverage. We also have criticized the approach's recommendations for conservation on private property, which focus on education, volunteerism, and incentives. In our experience, this is magical thinking. We see the teardowns that consistently result, despite our pleas and yours, in huge houses that are neither classic nor cottages. It is time for more definitive action, mandating protections for our mature trees and doing so immediately, so that we do not continue to fiddle while Rome burns. As the staff notes and as Matt just said, 87% of Arlington's tree canopy is not owned by the county. Yet, the implementation framework of this draft plan for trees on private property contains nothing more than vague assurances that we will somehow, over the next one to two, three, to three years, through such magical thinking, enhance development standards to optimize retention or replacement of tree canopy. It is wrong to excuse our abdication of responsibility here by asserting that state law limits Arlington's ability to do much about this, as the staff report suggests on page 23 and 155. Donaldson Run has pointed out, for example, that state law permits Arlington to have a tree preservation ordinance to designate and protect heritage and specimen trees, but in 2002, the board gutted its ordinance by providing single-family homeowners with a veto right over any such designation, which is not required by state law. And state law provides the county with very broad zoning authority to address others, the problem of lot coverage, which I will address separately. Donaldson Run also identified several other steps the plan should include to address our accelerating loss of mature canopy on private land, earlier opportunities for more meaningful input by neighborhoods before granting special exceptions, enabling neighborhood review of tree preservation plans filed by developers, which are often actually tree destruction plans, codifying International Society of Arboriculture Standards for tree preservation during development, and enforcing the requirement for review by the Chesapeake Bay Ordinance Review Commission, a citizen body, of any proposed land disturbance or development in our Chesapeake Bay watershed. The drafts of the plan continue to ignore all of these ideas. You should direct the staff to do better than this. Time is not on our side. This leads me to lot coverage reform. The plan contains only an obscure reference to this on page 58, notwithstanding the emphasis of the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission on the need for this review, and as you've heard today, a review now. The plan also ignores the strong views to this same effect by members of the public, reflected in the online engagement summary last year summarized in our letters. I will not repeat here what Donaldson Run and others have told each of you about the importance of prompt action on lot coverage reform, including examples of the abuses permitted under our current rules. I believe each of you recognizes the need for such a review as staff did almost 10 years ago, and as Donaldson Run has been urging for almost as long. Why the delay? The accelerating pace and size of residential development, the more serious consequences of impervious surfaces with greater and more frequent storms, the irreparable effects of the loss of huge trees, and the extension of these rules to future missing middle teardowns all call for immediate action now more than ever. What have we been waiting for? Why have 21 other studies, including the future of outdoor dining and penthouse regulation, jumped the queue in the past two years despite staff's recognition long ago of the need to begin this one? I urge you to direct the staff today, as three of you did almost two years ago, to begin this review now without further delay, and not to wait another six months or longer, even to begin to study the problem by waiting till next year's budget is adopted. Soon, we'll have little tree canopy on private land left to study. Thank you for your consideration of these comments.
Thank you. Does that conclude our public speakers?
That does conclude our public speakers for this item.
Thank you. The discussion is now with the board. I think we can begin with the motions, so I'll turn to Vice Chair Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. I would be pleased to do that. As for the board report of December 11th on this issue, I move that we adopt the resolution attached, that's Attachment One, to the board report, that is to adopt the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan, which is Adaptment Two, as an element of Arlington's Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. De Feranti. Do you have the floor to speak to it?
I would be pleased to do that. Well, we'll probably do thanks use at the end, but it is pretty amazing. Everybody's sitting up here, everybody's kind of together. I mean, I think everyone is in agreement on this plan. The issue is the implementation. It's one of those devils in the details, right? And I would just like to, so I'm absolutely, obviously, I made the motion, we're gonna, we will pass this. The question is what we do next. And I really appreciated Mr. Klingelhofer's setting out five, the five priorities, because we have 10 priorities in the report, but they're lifted from the board, and the language is not, maybe not as clear as you might sometimes want for communication purposes. And I find myself on one, two, and three that you listed, Mr. Klingelhofer. Those have been my priorities for a while, and they will be for next year, and I'll just go over them here quickly. One of them is the rules for lot coverage and setbacks. I think we really do need to step it up on that. Incentives really are not gonna, are not cutting it. Trees are getting cut. So I know we've got our, I'm not going to make a motion today, but we've got a work plan coming up, and we've got two new board members coming on, and I'm hoping we can take some much stronger steps on that particular direction, because I think it's crucial. Ensuring that biophilia is in the planning process from the beginning, I'm really hopeful that we can do that somehow, incorporate it with the Planning Commission process and these processes that we have. I'm not quite sure how we need to make that happen. I'll find out, you know, but we need to figure that out in a level of recommendation, and if anybody wants to comment from staff, that would be great. Because I find too often now, plans come to us, and there are statements about, you know, missing milkweed and that, and why isn't this there? And well, they, we didn't talk about it at the beginning, and then it gets put in the, anyway, I think we can do a much, much better job. We are on some projects, but I really would like to see us step it up on that. And then the third one, deer management. It is time to take that one on, which I think we will be doing next spring. I don't expect the conversation to be easy. So, thank you, everyone. I think this is great. Finally, actually, I do want to say, to staff, too, putting in more graphics and pictures is just great. I always look forward to presentations from Parks and Rec and these, because they're pictures of leaves and trees and flowers and deer and critter, critters and birds. I just feel better. I don't know if anybody else, but your blood pressure goes down. So absolutely, yes, with the graphics and the pictures, because I think it helps a whole lot, so, thank you. Pleased to make this motion, pleased to support it, and looking forward to some major work next year on making sure that we get these priorities set. And again, I've kind of laid out, at least for me personally, what my one, two, and three are for getting done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, Mr. De Feranti.
Happy to support this. It is very wonderful to consider a plan where there's so much agreement and gratitude from everyone. This is not everything that we, that comes to the dais, for sure. So really appreciate each of your work on it. I know that's been a lot. Looking at the 10 items, priority actions, won't come to, as a grand surprise, but tree, the tree equity fund work that has been done over the past year or two, that's an area where I'm really interested to see if we can make some progress in the budget process. I think it's very important to immediately thereafter acknowledge that we don't have a lot of ongoing funding, but I wonder if one-time funding might be a way, because if you look through the 10 different items, a lot of them could be touched by some of our tree equity-related work. And then the other items that Mr. Klingelhofer, I know that there's a lot of discussion to come over the next year on those items, and I will look forward and leave to next year those discussions, but really pleased with this plan, grateful for it, and happy to support. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Toledo.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. I just want to also extend my thanks to the staff for their very hard and great work. It's a very thorough plan, laid out very well, and I recognize all of the recommendations. When you have that many, I think it's great to prioritize, and I appreciate the timeline anticipations in your framework implementation piece in the back, so, you know, thank you for the intentionality and engagement and layout of the plan. I'm glad to hear that Ms. Garvey is looking at the lot, lot coverage work next, starting next year. I will not be on the board, but I do think it's also an important study to take on and to really figure out how we can address those needs in our community, so I'm excited about that. And I have no doubt that she will champion this plan and make sure that we have a very balanced community to live that really emphasizes the importance of our tree canopy, of our natural landscapes, of everything that lives in the natural landscapes in our trees and how they are part, and an important part of our community and our ecosystem. So I'm excited to see how this moves forward, and just a big thank you to everyone, our volunteers as well, and everyone who has invested time over the last three years to get us to this point today.
Thank you. Mr. Karantounas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I originally had a couple of questions on how we report, et cetera, but I see that the plan is already set up to report. We will be watching to make that reporting more effective. I look forward to, you know, the dashboard way to actually track what we are now recognizing to be a major capital asset, right? And besides, a capital asset is also a social asset. I remember when I came to Arlington, that's quite a while ago, and very soon, I discovered that the naturalist community is actually a constituency. And there was a Bible that was coming in this church, and this was Bring Nature Home by Doug Tallam. And, you know, that gives me, gives me still a lot to pause and to think about, because it opened my mind about how much of investment we residents should have in this. And that goes back also to the issue of the balance between regulation and actual, you know, building of constituencies. I can imagine, I mean, I agree with you that setbacks, gaining ground, finding places, renaturalizing, bringing back biodiversity, creating the, the conditions of renaturalization in the urban environment, these are critical elements of what a, you know, modern management of an urban environment should include. But it also says that we need to really focus on how to grow these assets as social assets, that people engage when they see architecture and say, "We can do better." Biophilic conditions is a typical example of that. If you look at any current publication of urbanism, you will see amazing examples that are absolutely feasible, and for some reason, they seem to be absolutely unattainable here. And I think that this is where we can do better, and this is the kind of plan where we can say, "Didn't we say that we will want to achieve that?" We can grow trees on buildings, actually, small and big. We can think differently. We can think differently about public spaces that have more, you know, more of a grove rather than just a completely mixed use of playgrounds and other things, so that we, you know, take the, bring the natural asset to be the protagonist of that. We can do a lot of that. So the entire process, the advocacy of the commissions, the advocacy of citizens, especially Donaldson Run, I have to say, it was very early in my tenure here that we had the Stream Restoration Project, and a new restoration project will be coming up. So this, this plan here will inform our view on how we should be doing things and how we should measure success, because for me, this is the most critical part. How are we going to be back here in five years and say, this, this is how we perform? So I will, of course, support the motion. I thank you for the, for the very long and thorough work. I find it, and, you know, very important that the Black Oak leaf is standing for tree canopy in the logo of the plan, and that's, that's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll certainly applaud this effort as well, try to do so succinctly. You know, on substance, this is really great that we're able to take plans that had long since passed their point of needing to be updated and bring them together, not only to update them with the latest and greatest of our thinking and information, but, you know, combining disciplines where appropriate, and convening pretty impressive group of thought leaders in our county to kind of work this out. And lo and behold, look at the, the way in which not only everyone feels like they were able to contribute, but see that the, the end product is not some sort of Franken-plan, but one that works seamlessly. It's really a terrific body of work, and I'm grateful for it. And colleagues, from a broader perspective, if you take this plan and you take the Historic and Cultural Resources Plan from next month, couple of takeaways, since, you know, I'm talking a lot about abundance today. Arlington can do plans, and, and no one complains about the engagement, and everyone feels included and valued. We're not, we're not always terrible, so we can, we can, we can get it right. And this, this shows us that that is quite possible, as that plan did last month. So I thank everybody for their engagement. I do know that certainly the details of implementation are a big concern. And I do want to speak to Mr. Richardson's concern a little bit, because I've been reflective on this a bit. You know, lot coverage, which I know frustrates you greatly, that there hasn't been greater attention to what has been the board's articulated concerns over the years. And I'm reminded of something that I believe Ms. Hines, your former colleague, Ms. Garvey, said once about Arlington. You know, we can do anything we want, but we can't do everything we want. She was talking about fiscal, financial resources, but I think it also applies to human resources. We have to acknowledge that in Arlington, we've got the capacity and the ability to do anything we set our mind to, full confidence in that. But we can't do everything that we may be interested in doing, because we just don't carry that kind of staff capacity. That does have a direct relationship to fiscal decisions, like the budget. So I know you want to think of those separately, but they actually have to be thought of together. And so I hope that if you, not necessarily just Mr. Richardson, but anybody else who's out there really thinking that we should be moving on the priorities that we've either committed to or that I want us to commit to, you cannot separate that from a budget conversation. And so I'd also encourage you, if you are of that mind, to come out and support generating those resources in whatever way you think is most practicable, practicable for Arlington County to address the priorities you care about. With that, Mr. Karantounas, I see your lights on.
That was vestigial.
No worries. We're ready to move to a vote on Ms. Garvey's motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you all, and we appreciate it.
Congratulations to staff on this. Excellent job.
Well done.
All right. Are we ready to call our next item?
Yes. The next item is Item 46. That is Pentagon City Metro Station Second Elevator Project Budget Increase Due to Construction Delays.
Okay. Take it away, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here for a brief presentation is George May, along with help as needed from Mike Moon. Over to you, George.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon. I am George May from DES Facilities and Engineering, to present our request for board authorization to increase funding for the three support contractors that work with us in managing the Pentagon City Second Elevator Project. Next. The second elevator will go on the east side, excuse me, the west side of Hay Street, and is shown with a yellow square and a yellow star. It's in front of the, it's in front of the Fashion City Mall, and reached, and it's being installed to meet the WAMADA criteria for redundant elevator service. In 2015, the county selected a design bid-build approach for this project, and in 2017, the final design contract was awarded to STV. The construction contract was awarded to the low bidder, WM Slosser, in 2021, with a projected contract delivery date of October 21st, 2022. Multiple performance issues with the contractor of delayed completion was now estimated for the fall of 2024. The diagram on the left shows the arrangement between the construction contractor, WM Slosser, the county, and our three support contractors who are shown on the other side of the county circle. Slosser is solely responsible for project delivery, quality control, and meeting the standards of the contract. ProCon is our consultant that provides quality assurance oversight and tracks project, project progress against Slosser's published schedule. STV has shifted from the role of designer to construction administration, that reviews Slosser's material and equipment submittals for compliance with the specifications, and they approve design modifications when they are needed to address field discrepancies. WAMADA also reviews construction submittals, monitors construction, and STV's approved field modifications as a precursor to their being able to accept a completed elevator for their system. The table on the right shows a progression of funding increases for the support contractors whose costs are based on their level of effort. In April 2021, simultaneously with the construction contract, we awarded the three support contractors with a total combined value of $2.3 million, projecting their services through planned completion in October of 2022. In November 2022, we requested, and the board authorized, an additional $1.6 million for the support contractors to cover their efforts to the expected completion, which was in forecast for this fall. Today, we are requesting an additional authorization of $3.1 million to continue these services through completion, and it includes an additional six months of contingency funding for their services should the extension, the completion extend beyond fall of 2024. Next. In our way forward, the construction is now 75% complete, and the fastest path to finish the project is to continuing work with Slosser. This will require continuous rigorous oversight of construction by our support contractors and county staff to assure that the end product will meet the requirements and is acceptable for WAMADA to enter into their system. In parallel with the construction, county staff and ProCon will continue to evaluate each of Slosser's claims currently 24 have been submitted, to determine extent of any allowable time extensions or cost increases while reserving our recovery rights under the terms of the contract. Additionally, the county staff is now looking at alternate delivery methods for our more complex projects. Both construction manager risk and design bid vehicles are preferred that would allow contractor selection based on qualifications and relevant experience, with the additional advantage of having the contractor involved during the design phase. The text at the bottom of the slide shows our recent experience with two construction management at risk projects, the lever-run community center, Forest Station 8, which will finish construction and their service this spring. And the two design-build projects of note are the Long Bridge Aquatic and Fitness Facility and replacement of the South Glebe Street Bridge. This concludes our presentation. Open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. May. Just to make sure everyone is grounded, just in overall terms, since there are a lot of numbers associated with this, and, you know, we don't always do math well, just in terms of the project budget, what is the change from what we originally conceived to where we are today with this action?
Well, the original project budget in the 2332 CIP was $10.45 million. With the additional costs of further work with our support contractors and rolling in the cost of county staff and our other soft costs, it is now up to $17 million.
So, you know, generally speaking, we're talking about 60%. It's kind of a big number, but there are a lot of different factors. There's not, you know, there's timelines, there are delays, there are the other things that you, you mentioned, the need for renewed work. Unfortunate, all the way around, but I'll just leave it at that. Mr. De Feranti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Share the concern here. I think that the timing for the contract is also a period where there's been significant cost increases generally, but I, still the 60% is concerning. What, what steps, actions have we taken since the completion date, October of 2022? And what are we doing now to get on schedule?
Well, thank you. As we saw the projected completion date come and go, we, we stepped up our overview and daily, weekly meetings with Slosser to learn their issues and what their workmanship problems might be, and how we could best overcome them.
Got it. Thank you. And there's still some work to be done to finalize it, finalize steps. Do appreciate the attention through the weekly, weekly process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I might add that we have not paid Slosser, or have not authorized or suggested to pay Slosser, anything more than the original award value.
Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Karantounas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks for presenting and informing us on all this. Definitely not an easy and not a welcome conversation, right? So what do we do? What, what measures are we taking so that this doesn't happen in other places as well, in other projects that we have?
Well, as I mentioned, what we would prefer to do, and we get other complex projects, and this one shouldn't have been complex, it's simply an elevator, but because of its location, it had a number of construction sighting issues. But as we go forward, we look at the delivery methods I mentioned, which will allow us to hire the contract, the construction contractor during the design phase and select them based on their experience and their competency in this particular type of a project. And having the construction contractor there earlier gets constructability questions addressed during the design phase, so we avoid some of the issues we saw on this job.
Thank you.
All right. So let me see, one more. Go ahead, Mr. De Feranti.
So we covered, I do think that there's some advantages to, to newer methods of strategies to minimize future contracts. I don't know if we talked a little bit, or if you could just succinctly share, I know you're, we have not made certain payments that we are, that may be contested. What remedies do you think that we would be seeking, just generally?
Well, the remedies we might receive on this contract are limited by the terms of the, of the contract itself.
Sure.
And there is a penalty clause if the contract is extended beyond the original completion date without an agreement between the county and the contractor, that there's reasonable cause to extend the completion date.
Thank you, Mr. May and Mr. Chair. I don't want to go into any additional detail. I just wanted to signal that that is at least something that I'm, I understand that staff is pursuing, and I support that.
Thank you. And I just wanted to get your perspective on this, Mr. May. You know, the, you outlined a number of different factors that went into the issues that we're experiencing, and with these newer methods that we've employed to some degree of success, it's not necessarily true that either one of those methods would have solved all of the issues we've experienced here. You know, from my thinking, maybe CMAR could have helped with some of the supply chain issues and making sure that that risk, you know, was, was shared appropriately by the construction manager, and maybe design-build would have allowed for the HVAC issues to be resolved. But it's not like we would have had no issues with another, with another process necessarily, right?
That is true.
Okay. All right. So with all of that, I'm prepared to offer a motion, and that is to approve the county manager's recommendations, which is associated with Item Number 46. It comes in four parts, to approve an increase to the ProCon Consulting LLC contract, Number 2, to approve an increase for the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority Agreement for the construction of the Pentagon City Second Elevator, 3, to approve an increase to, in the STV Incorporated Contract for Construction Administration Services, and 4, to authorize the purchasing agent to execute the contract subject to legal review by our county attorney. Seconded by Mr. De Feranti. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tlento.
I'll be supporting the motion, but I did want to first thank you for the answers that you provided to the questions, the good questions my colleagues had. Recognizing that in any construction project, there are not many that I see go exactly as planned or in the expected costs, it's always concerning when our costs go to the point that they have for this project. But I appreciate the efforts that you all are making to seek remedies, the mitigations that you're putting in place, and how you're looking to perhaps try to make these less, you know, mitigate these in the future. So just wanted to thank you for that. Recognize that we can't stop this project where it is today. That's really not a choice. And so appreciate you being here and having this discussion with us so that we understand what motion we have to make today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now move to a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it, 5-0. Are you ready to call item, whichever one it is?
Moving on to Item 47. This is a resolution regarding the good faith funding of the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the American- collective bargaining agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees District Council 20 and the County of Arlington.
Well, thank you very much. I tell you what, this is a, we're still working through the rhythms of how we do these various items under our collective bargaining regime. But I think, Mr. Prestone, Mr. Rodriguez, why don't you come on down here, even though you don't have necessarily a formal role in this process. If there's anything that you want to say, you should be there and not necessarily in the audience. So, welcome. That'll be great. And this is the point at which we are taking up consideration of the good faith resolution to fund the tentative collective bargaining agreement. This was introduced with a presentation and a hearing last month. So today, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barrera, but I believe the conversation is with the county board. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right. So first, I will turn to Mr. De Feranti, because maybe you'd like to put a motion on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I'm getting this wrong at any point, please let me know. It's all still new to me. This is...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and move the resolution in the staff report dated December 4th. The resolution regarding the good faith funding of the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees District Council 20 Local 3001 and the County of Arlington, Virginia.
Moved and seconded. Would you like to continue discussing?
Just briefly, this is, I feel thrilled and really pleased to be able to make this motion. I've spent some of my time at the National, my work time at the National AFSCME headquarters, and beneath and below this is valuing our employees. We talked a little bit earlier today about income being something that we should work on so that we have folks a really inclusive community, and this is a piece of that, of making that happen in what will not be a simple budget time. So I know there's been a ton of work put on this, both of you, as well as the organizing local and also our staff, and I'm happy to try to put our abstract ideals that we passed through collective bargaining several years ago into concrete step forward, as I see it, and I think we see it through this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. And before I continue recognizing board members, Mr. Schwartz, I now see a note that Ms. Naylor was here for a presentation. I didn't see her in the room, so maybe she's online.
She's not. I just did want to offer just one or two points.
Absolutely.
And I'm glad to see our friends from AFSCME here. You know, we worked on this. We had 51 working condition articles. We talked about this last month, and it covers 345 employees. And I'm thrilled that we're able to have this agreement with the workers who do frontline service to our community. So that's, just wanted to offer that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, and I'll just sort of continue in the same vein. I mean, it's kind of exciting to get into collective bargaining things, and actually, it brings you to the table here and getting a little more recognition than you all. I mean, because it's, everything works, and we're comfortable here. Again, I see, you know, you turn on the water, you can drink it, the lights. I mean, it's just, it's really incredible how comfortable we really are here, although people complain about things. But you all make it happen, and really, really appreciate it. And I know it's been, the last few years have been really tough. It's never easy, but it's really been tough. So thank you, and I'm glad you could be here for this recognition, and that we are sure going to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I cannot describe how happy I am to vote for this. From, you know, yesterday, replacing a water main on your just next block to me, to my home, to the librarian who right now is serving kids in Central Library at AFSCME, is that, these are our employees. And this is the moment in the year even that most important, it's the most important to recognize the service, and to recognize that this service is only possible when people have good jobs, stable jobs, with negotiated, predictable, stable working conditions, dignified conditions. And we are proud to be one of these employers, and to advise everybody else who's an employer here, here in Arlington and beyond, that this is the right way to do things. This is, what we do here for our public sector should be, and should be, you know, really the model for everybody as far as possible, the private sector as well. So I'm particularly happy to support the motion and the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Toledo.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. I just want to, I'm sure that I'll be supporting this motion. I'm excited to do so. Really appreciate both being here to represent your colleagues and the work that you do. And I think it's a great opportunity that we have now to be able to negotiate with you on how to make sure that you all feel you're being treated fairly, and that we're the best employers that we can be as a county. So thank you for your service to the county, and I am excited to be voting on this today.
Very much. And from my part, I'll just say, the action that we are taking this morning is to approve the good faith resolution that is the result of hearing the fiscal impact study of the collective bargaining agreement that we heard last month. So this action simply says, in light of all of that information, and in recognition of the process to date, that the board has every intention to meet its obligations to AFSCME under the tentative agreement, and gives them the comfort that there will be no efforts to have one process result in one outcome, and then for another process to result in a different one. So with that, love to invite Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Prestone, anything that you would like to say as we hopefully bring this process to a close this afternoon. You can do it right there.
This has been, when I started 28 years ago, when I was told this was a right-to-work state, I still signed the union card. To be this far, it's arduous, humbling, yet I'm proud. And I know there's a lot of other people here whose names I don't remember, but I've contributed, and I'm grateful for your considerations in this momentous. This is a hybrid contract, if you're aware. This is not a standard, run-of-the-mill, ironworkers' contract. We have the ability to tweak it as needed. Where it's weak, we can strengthen it. Where it needs to be buffeted, we can enhance it. We didn't get everything. We threw at the wall, but I like what stuck to the wall. Sincerely, I thank you guys. This has been a, I was amazed at the professionalism and the attention to detail. And if anyone sat in that room knows that I took a lot of time, and I argued over the two words, "shall" and "may." And I took that serious, took that role seriously. I speak for Anthony. I know that it's been a lot of ups and downs, and we're proud and yet humble to be here. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody, and like Tim said, the professionalism. And, you know, it was never a bad place to work. You guys made a great place to work even before the union. It just can be better and more stable, and then more, you know. So thank you so much for everything. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. I think with that, I think we're all ready for a vote. All those in favor of Mr. De Feranti's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, five zero. Is there any other business to come before the board this afternoon?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. De Feranti.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Clerk. I just want to, I will set the timer, and I will be brief, but if you'll indulge me, this is the last time I get to sit on this dais with you as chair, and I want to thank you so much. There's, I have, I always try to keep numbered points, so I stay succinct-ish. But, and I'll just say a couple of them. First, as shown through Barcroft, you've always had the big picture in mind, and you've stayed positive, and that is a huge resource that we've had on the board. I think it's self-evident to say that you synthesize things and are a speaker that most everyone in the county admires. But I want to focus on some of the smaller things, the less perhaps noticeable, your preparation for every board meeting, your kindness to everyone you work with. The first board meeting that I was in, you referred to what allowed you to serve, and you talked about your mom, and I think if she knew what you've done in eight years, she would be extremely proud. So I'm going to miss team's meetings, when we spend usually 10 minutes or 15, but, you know, we can make each other laugh and get through a lot of work in a short period of time, and I'll miss those. And then, you know, I will say that it's been a joy to watch and to learn how hard you approach responsibility, and responsibility in your job on the board, and responsibility as a dad. And so that last one is particularly poignant, because on Monday, hopefully, I will celebrate the arrival of a daughter. I will not be here on Tuesday. I don't mention it for much reason, just so that it's on the record, but mostly, thank you for the honor of working with you.
Well, Mr. De Feranti, that was, that's deeply appreciated, and I am much more excited about the changes coming in your life than the changes about to come to mine. And so I wish you and Brooke not only the best, but certainly, I hope with your indulgence, we will be able to announce some pretty great news and show some pretty great pictures in your absence on Tuesday evening.
That's a Brooke question.
Okay, all right. Will do. Will do. With that, Mr. Barrera, is there any other business to come before the board this afternoon?
There is not.
And with that, we are in recess until Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Thank you all.